If I can get all supervisors up here, we'll go ahead and get started with our meeting. So we've got a lot to cover. Going to get behind.
It's not a lot, really.
A long way to go in a short time to get there.
Hello, Mr. Chairman.
I'll call the meeting to order. Like to welcome everyone here today. And just thank you for coming. Just in our local government and county business. Our first order of business, we'll have our invocation by Supervisor Lori Smith. And allegiance, Supervisor Thompson's not here today. So I'll ask Supervisor Kundif if he will lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Okay.
Let's all stand for our invocation.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today so grateful for the blessings that you bestow upon us on a daily basis. We pray today, Lord, for this board. We pray and for our staff that we will be enabled to have good insight, be very judicious with our work, and represent the citizens to the best of our ability. We pray for our citizens with the trials and tribulations that go through families. We lift them up to you today, Lord. And also, we hold our country up, Lord, today as we all have grave concerns about the state of our union here in the United States. So, Lord, continue to bless us, see us through hard times, help us celebrate the good times, and help us maintain that good, healthy balance in the lives that we lead. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with everything done as well.
Okay, next on the agenda, we need to approve the agenda. Anyone have any questions about the agendas as presented? Mr. Sandy, we do have a couple changes to the agenda. This change here, the elevator at the courthouse has, for lack of better terms, quit and needs to be repaired. And so this is considered an emergency to get this done. And that's why it is time sensitive and that's why it has been added to our agenda at this point. Brandy, do you have, I'll let you come forward if you will, if anyone has any questions they'd like to ask about this.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. I'm going to run through the cover sheet, our executive summary, for you guys a little bit since you are getting it so late. On March 2nd, my department was notified that staff at the courthouse was experiencing mechanical issues with our public elevator. We did call in TK Elevator to evaluate the unit and it was determined that the hydraulic jack packing needed to be replaced. Pricing was solicited from TKE for the labor and materials needed for that repair. And an emergency determination was made for that purchase. My department issued a purchase order that day in the amount of $6,900 for that work. The replacement of the packing was completed soon after the emergency determination was made, but it did not correct the issue, unfortunately. We did bring in TKE again, this time for the replacement of the hydraulic jack itself. This is obviously a much more intensive and expensive repair. An initial pricing for that work is $60,514. That work does have a four to five week lead time. The pricing for the replacement of the jack is contingent upon the hole not collapsing when they remove the jack, however. If there was to be a partial or a complete collapse, we're looking at an additional cost of $36,000 to $70,000. And basically, that work would be to clear out the hole so that they can install the new jack. We have been told there is a 50-50 chance of one of those collapses occurring. As General Properties has had to terminate the use of that elevator until the repairs are made, it has unfortunately created additional stress on our two remaining units. One of those which is located at the main security entrance. Yesterday, we were notified of some mechanical issues with that unit. And we have received a quote to replace the piston check valves. And that work cost $8,558. So Franklin County General Properties, we do have sufficient funding in our capital improvement program contingency line item to pay for these repairs. The amount will range from $60,514 to approximately $140,000. I know that's a very wide range, but at this point, until we get in there and replace the jack, we're not going to know. Given the county's procurement guidelines that stipulate purchases over 50,000 needing to be approved by the board, my department is requesting a approval for the repairs to be made within that price range. The proposed purchase will be made under the county's emergency procurement guidelines and the contractor is a member of Omnia Partners, which is a cooperative purchasing program that will allow the county to proceed with the repairs without soliciting additional. So at this time, I am respectfully requesting that the board authorize my department to proceed with the needed repairs to the elevators at the courthouse. Again, these repairs will be procured under emergency procurement guidelines and will be in the range, or the anticipated range, of $60,514 to $140,000. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Go ahead.
Hi, Brandy, thank you for this.
You're welcome.
Is the contingency built in this range? Or is the range itself, I mean, do you need to build in a contingency, basically, is my question?
I feel like I've hit the highest level with the $140,000 that we'll need.
Okay, I just want to make sure that you're comfortable. You know, because there may be, as you said, some unknowns once you get in there and you feel that you're good to go.
I think we could easily bump it to 150,000 just to cover if we have to do some work at night or over the weekends. And if it was to exceed that amount, I could definitely come back to you guys and let you know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, before I take any other questions, I'd like to have a motion that we add this to the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to add this to the agenda. Madam Clerk, you need a roll call on that or voice?
Consensus is fine.
Agenda, consent agenda.
Do we have, I guess, everybody nodding their head to add this, so we have a consensus to add this to the agenda? You weren't on the consent agenda?
Are we doing, can we do this as a separate action item? Because there's funds involved, so I will need to do a roll call.
Okay, so this would be a separate item. So we have a motion and a second that we add this to the agenda. All in favor, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or none opposed? Now we can take action on this item. So if we have any other questions before we take. Okay, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that the board authorize Franklin County's Department of General Properties to proceed with elevator repairs at the Franklin County courthouse. These repairs will be procured under the county's emergency procurement guidelines with an anticipated cost between $60,514 and $19.00 and $140,000.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Move forward with this project. Any other discussion before we take a final vote?
I'll just have one quick question. Is this going to deplete your capital improvement funding tremendously, Brandy?
Yes. I hate to say that, but we have it there for a reason, but this is going to take out a very large chunk of it.
I need to discuss how to replenish that moving forward.
That's a good point, Mr. Carter.
Any other discussion or questions before we take a vote? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, you take a roll call, please.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Kundif?
Yes.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Thompson is absent for the vote. Chairman Tatum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy. Okay, getting back to our agenda. We need to take a vote to approve the rest of the agenda at this point?
Send move.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as it remains. Any other questions or comments before we take a final vote? This need to be a roll call or voice?
A voice vote will be fine.
All in favor that we approve the agenda? Let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Referring to none opposed. Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, before we get started with the rest of today's meeting, we'd like to take a moment to celebrate and recognize the achievement of two county departments. These departments have recently received state and regional awards for their initiatives and we're certainly proud of the accomplishments of these two departments. As these are just two being showcased today, we're proud of all of our county departments and the hard work that they do every day serving the citizens of Franklin County. At this time, I'd like to ask Director William Ferguson, better known as Billy, come on up front, please, for recognition. He's our Director of Public Safety and I'm going to ask him to come to the podium as I read a little background of this award. The Blue Ridge Fire and EMS Academy is a joint venture between Franklin, Henry, and Patrick Counties. The academy was founded during the pandemic as a means to recruit, train, and hire full-position vacancies within the fire and EMS services in the Blue Ridge area. On February 22nd, as a part of the annual Virginia Fire Chiefs Association Expo and Symposium in Virginia Beach, Governor Youngkin recognized the Blue Ridge Fire EMS Training Academy with a 2022 Governor's Fire Service Award in the category of Excellence in Virginia Fire Service Training. This is the second award that has been awarded to Franklin County Department of Public Safety in the past year as a result of the Blue Ridge Fire and EMS Academy. Billy, congratulations for a job well done. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention our partners in Henry County and Patrick County as well. This certainly serves our community as well as our neighboring communities. And I'll be quite honest with you, I've wondered why it's taken so long for someone to get the initiative and I'm so proud of you and just being transparent. My brother's the other director in Henry County that helped you, worked with you in putting together this program. And just so, so well-needed. And you have done such a wonderful job with this, you and your staff. And we are such appreciation and just thank you, Billy, for all that you've done. I'd like to stand and give a hand.
Speech, speech.
At this time, I'm going to ask all my other fellow board members to join me up front. I would like to take a few pictures with our Director of Public Safety. Again, this is something that has been needed in the fire and EMS field for many years. My background in law enforcement goes back to the late 80s. And a number of years ago, 40-some years ago, across the state of Virginia, your regional law enforcement academies were formed to provide law enforcement training for localities. And something of that nature in the fire and EMS field has been needed. But until recently, when our director and director in Henry County got together and put together this program, there was no such regional training available in the state of Virginia. And we're so proud of them, their accomplishments, and their hard work in providing this service that is producing well-trained, well-qualified fire and EMS personnel that serve our communities. Billy, on behalf of the Franklin County Board of Supervisors, I just want to just present this as a token of our appreciation and from the state of Virginia, through Governor Youngkin and through Franklin County, Billy, thank you so much for all you do for Franklin County.
Hey, Tim, do you want to keep the board down to do the next one since we're all down here?
I'll keep the board members up front. No need in sitting down and coming back because we have another. Don't run off, Tommy, we've got another one to do. At this time, I'd like to ask for Director of Economics Development, Beth Sims, and Economics Development Specialist, Amy Tosh Minix, and from Leadpoint Digital, Carrie Cousins, to come to the podium, please. All right, last year, our Economic Development Department and marketing contractor, Leadpoint Digital, launched the professional blog series Franklin County Shines. Beth and Amy worked with Leadpoint Digital to profile citizens who thrive in Franklin County. Each profile was posted to improve the messaging and engagement online and on social media. On February 16th, at the Public Relations Society of the American Blue Ridge Chapter Summit Awards, Franklin County Economics Development and Leadpoint Digital earned a silver award in the category of Public Relations Campaign for the work on the Franklin County Shines campaign. I just want to say, again, we're so proud of all of our departments. But on these days where we get to recognize the ones for their excellent work and excelling in their field, it just gives us a tremendous sense of pride and gratitude for the work that you do serving the citizens of Franklin County. So I'd like, I'll ask the three of you to come up here and let's get some pictures because we like to, the board likes to look good and we need all the help we can get to do that. So y'all come on up here.
Those are happy times, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely, absolutely. And now we can move on with the consent agenda. I'd like to remind each of the supervisors, if you haven't had any questions, I hope you've had a time to contact staff members prior to today with any questions and clarifications. If not, what's your pleasure in regard to the consent agenda at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I can pull number three, please.
Number three?
Please.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, the consent agenda, item one, two, four, and five are left. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve consent items one, two, four, and five. All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Referring to show there are none opposed, okay, item three, Mr. Kundif.
Yeah, it's not that I'm not against it, by no means. I think we will need it. I think we kicked this can around for two or three years and I just think people need to realize how important that piece of equipment is. Because it is several dangerous places at the landfill that they have to go over and mow and do whatever. So I just want to make sure people realize how important that piece of equipment is. And me saying that, I'd like to make a motion, we go ahead and adopt number three.
Okay. We have a motion to adopt consent item number three. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt consent item number three. Any further discussion before we take a final vote? All right, seeing none, all in favor to adopt item number three on the consent agenda? Let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? None opposed. Thank you. All right, moving right along. Mr. Daniels.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good to be with you. And I mentioned last month that the weather was nice and it is again today. So I don't know if we have totally closed the door yet, but we're getting close. So I'll give my report as usual and then take questions. I'm going to jump ahead to the next 60 days because some of that's actually already occurred. And the first one of those is Potters Creek. We did a pipe replacement near Snow Creek Road. And we've actually got that complete and the road is open a couple of days ahead of schedule, so that worked out great. They just opened it today, in fact. The fourth bullet, you'll see Route 40, pipe replacement, that has been a long-term ongoing effort. I think Mr. Sandy and others in the county have talked to the business owners and what have you there. We had done some ditch work on the outfall of the pipe, try to get that water to flow. When it rains hard, it just backs up in that area. So we're finally going to get some pipe replaced in there and it'll definitely improve the situation. We hope it'll solve it. But the main thing is we're going to get that pipe replaced here pretty soon, within the next month or so. Five Mile Mountain, we're going to close that on April 10th. And for those of you who know the area, there is no good detour in the mountain. But that's going to be a short closure for the day of April 10th to replace a pipe. And the detour does take you back up Callaway Road to 221, back around and back into Franklin County. So like I said, it's a lengthy detour. We've coordinated, school's out that week for spring break. We've coordinated with a couple of the milk carriers in the area and some other commercial businesses and even some homeowners that are close by that would be fairly significantly affected. And lucky enough for us, everybody was very cordial, understanding. Some made arrangements to avoid it on April 10th. So the only thing that could mess us up is weather on the 10th. And if that happens, we'll make a change, make an adjustment. Brick Church Road is open. We did a slab span or a superstructure replacement on a bridge, put a concrete slab on that. I don't know that the pavement, paving has occurred, but that's open. And not on your report that we just found out late last week, Route 761, Robin Ridge Road in the Henry area. We're going to close that on March 28th. It'll open back up on the 30th for the same type operation. We're going to install a slab span, it's a superstructure replacement to eliminate weight restrictions and what have you. All right, go to page two. Got a couple of notes under land development. The waterline extension on 616 that's been going on for a little while, it's basically complete except for some cleanup, so that's a good thing. And you're going to see some activity on 122 in the West Lake area between now and Memorial Day for a right and left turn lane construction for the bank at Shopper's Pride. So that's actually a permit, the developers doing the work and installing that. But it will cause some delays. We're working with a developer to get it done before Memorial Day, obviously, because the peak season's starting and what have you, and managing those traffic backups as much as possible. All right, I'm going to jump, around about at Brooks Mill, basically the same report as last month. We should wrap up here pretty quick. If you remember, I talked about some pipe repairs that had to take place that's ongoing. And I haven't heard anything bad and sometimes that's a good thing. So we still anticipate that wrapping up at the end of the month. Speed studies, traffic studies, we've got the request that Ms. Smith made last month. That's actually in our hands, our traffic engineers in Salem for the West Lake area. And we did get a recommendation on the Turtle Hill request to post 30 mile an hour. So that's the Turtle Hill between Route 40 and Brooks Mill Road. So we'll be putting those signs up fairly soon, if they haven't already. I got a couple of answers to questions and mostly similar answers as I've had last month. But Mr. Carter, you asked about the centerline rumble strips and just talking to traffic engineering, while each district does handle it differently, our traffic engineers are looking at crash patterns and of course rumble strips are, when someone crosses the centerline, that's the pattern they look for. And then they'll put those in potentially with an overlay schedule or systematically across a whole corridor. It's not something we have on the radar for 122 or 40 or 116 or any of our primaries at this time. But that's a continual effort to look at those needs. I talked about the speed limit Ms. Smith asked about, the potholes or the maintenance concerns on Dudley Amos. Those are repaired. And then the McNeil Mill Road issues Mr. Nick Mitchell asked about. We're going to actually do some repairs to cut those roots so they don't continue to grow. And then we're going, we've got this machine called a zipper. It's kind of like a milling machine, but it's smaller, it goes on the front of a loader to grind up what's there. Then we'll reshape it and resurface it, surface treat it. So that should eliminate the root issues. Now, if there's other trees, you know, it may come back again at some point. But that should happen this spring or at the latest, very early summer. We'll take care of that. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Todd. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Daniels? Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Hi, Todd, glad to have you with us. Is there an update that you could provide on the issue of those reflective paints on 122 and Scruggs Road that we talked about about a month ago?
No, we haven't, as far as I know, our paint crews, VDOT Salem District Paint Crews, have not started up painting. So I don't have a timeline other than our program manager told us that they would get that early in the season.
So it's going to be done?
Soon, yeah, that's what we understand. And for the rest of that's a high build paint that we talked about that he was going to put in the West Lake area. We talked about 122 and also Scruggs. Now, I don't expect you'll see high build paint for the entirety of Scruggs because the further you go down, the traffic volume starts to decrease and fairly significantly towards the end. So you wouldn't, I don't think, use that product where your volumes are much lower. But bottom line, they plan to do that.
I think Blue Water might be a good consideration at that intersection. You know, I don't know, I have no expertise here. I'm just suggesting if there's got to be a stop place, that may be, you know, a common intersection to draw attention.
And we'll talk to them some more about it and try to get an idea on when to narrow that down maybe to a couple of week window or something and bring that back to the board. But I'm very confident they haven't started up because while the weather's been nice and it's going to be 80 degrees Thursday, it's going to be really nice. You know, we haven't had to apply a lot of salt and abrasives. We have done some brining in places. And the paint crews want all of that to be, Mother Nature will wash that away for us and traffic will wash it away. All of that to take place, clean the road, if you will, and then springtime weather, they start painting. And once they start, they keep painting all season long.
So what's going to be the boundary parameters for 122?
I don't know, I'll have to ask that. We'll find out what, Mr. Bowman is his name, we'll find out what he intends as far as where he's going to put the.
Well, I'm grateful for the attention to it, thank you.
Yeah, and I don't want to oversell it. Probably not the perfect answer, but it's better than what we've got, it sounds like. So it'll be, it'll be new to us, too. We'll be interested to see it.
Thank you.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes, sir.
How you doing today, sir?
Doing well.
Good day for it, ain't it?
Yes, it is.
Hey, on this Turtle Hill Road, what was the traffic count? Can you remember?
I don't know. I don't recall, Mr. Kundif.
Well, that's okay, that's okay.
So when you look at order magnitude, I gotta believe it's less than 1,000, but I expect it's greater than 500. And the reason I say that is oftentimes, we've got a memorandum that guides us on this. If a rural road is less than 500 vehicles a day and the crash history is minimal, there's a number that goes with that, but minimal, then we typically don't post the speed limit on those roads. I don't know that for Turtle Hill, so I'm making a little bit of assumption, but that is.
A lot of people cut through there. It's all like Burger Loop, there's a lot of people cut through there. How long will it be before we get 30 mile an hour signs up?
I don't know, I didn't check with my sign foreman before I came today. It all depended upon whether he had them in stock or not. So we didn't just get this back today, we've had it back for a couple of weeks. He may have already put them up if he had the signs in stock. If he didn't have the signs in stock, it usually takes us anywhere from 30 to 60 days to actually get the signs. We order them and they produce them in Richmond, then they ship them to Salem and then to us. So if they're not up already, it should be very soon. They are up? Mr. Kundif, question answered. We believe they're already up.
They're already up?
Yeah. We are very efficient.
Well, I came through here, okay. All right, good enough, good enough. I don't see that good number, no way. But, anyway, on the Bar Ridge, what are the projected date on starting on that?
We're still doing some project development. So, we've got early summer, you know, is it June, July, somewhere in there and early? This is just a description on our part, but we don't have an exact start date. But, we would like to say June, but there's some work to be done, engineering work, some signatures to get on some design and what have you from our drainage folks.
What would be the timeline on this, once they start to finish?
Probably 30 days. So, four to six weeks.
Thirty-six weeks?
Four to six weeks.
Okay.
So, we'll finish, let's see, we do start in July, we'll finish by, we'll surface treat by September 1 fairly easily. And our goal would be on most of these rural rustics to put the surface on by mid-October. We'll go as late as early November, but we, the temperatures really affect a surface chip seal. So, we target that October 15th date.
I appreciate that. And most of all, I appreciate all y'all do. Thank you so much. Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Daniels?
Thank you.
Don't see any? Thank you, Todd. Okay, at this time, I'll ask for David Rose, County Financial Advisor from Davenport.
You gonna set us up, Brian?
Yeah, I'm gonna pull it up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, David Rose here. I'm not gonna be too lengthy. I would start my remarks by letting everyone know the reason we're here is because the county is in very good financial shape. And so, as a result of that, we're able to look at doing capital projects and, in fact, listening to the emergency requirement for cash that was unexpected, clearly. It further underscores one of the points I was gonna make, which is to, in this budget season, I know I'm not elected, but if you can, I would very much keep your fund balances up and I would look to try to even keep the cushion that you have, especially while we're looking at record inflation or at least near-record inflation. I remember when I was starting in the early 80s, late 70s, it was like this. And again, sometimes a state may feel otherwise, but the next thing you know, they cut you back on things you don't expect a year or two from now. And we're talking about embarking on some serious projects with some big price tags. So, I just wanna make that point, knowing what I know about the county. So, with that said, let me see here if I can, let's see here. Okay, just go down this way, no? Brian, is it, which way is, oh, down, I'll do this way. Is it, no? Okay. It's not working. Okay, yeah, that's why.
That popped up.
What do you think?
All right.
What do you think?
Now, we're in business.
Okay, now we're in business. Okay. As you can tell, I'm not very technologically savvy and, you know, it's, I thought, I'll be honest, when I got out of school years ago, I was a chemistry major and I was excited. I said, my last class was they introduced a computer. And I said, you know what? This is great. I'll never have to worry about this again. Shows you how wrong I was, you know? So, it is what it is. Anyhow, so what I'd like to do today is just walk you through a presentation up on the screen, talk a little bit about a follow-up from where we were when I was here back in November. It seems like just yesterday. But, we talked about, as we do every year, your capital needs. I think one of the things this county does an excellent job at is really planning and thinking not only the short term, but long term, all the implications of what that means. And as a result of that, we haven't always done all this when the economy has been good. So, now, I think we're in a very good position to undertake some of the things that we're about to talk about and give you a sense of schedule. So, none of this is going to be new, but I did think it was important, Ms. Chairman, to tell everybody, as busy as y'all are, to make sure everybody is sort of refreshed with what the things that we have been in front of you and talked about. So, here in the background, again, we are your financial advisor, not here to sell you anything. In fact, if anything, we're going to look to the public markets to try to get the best possible financing for some of the projects that we're talking about. So, with that said, you know, earlier this year, you approached the state, the literary loan fund, to get some very low interest rate money with regard to a school project. We're still waiting on that. You and everyone else, they have not told anybody what's happening. I think that's going to be fairly quick. They've also talked about some grant monies, that's also out there. Nobody knows yet what's gonna happen on that either. But nevertheless, we've been planning for all that. We've incorporated all that to what we call our Plan of Finance. So, the Plan of Finance here on this page is one that incorporates the debt profile. We're gonna show you that once again, graphically and numerically. We're adding in capital projects, several of which we're talking about funding now and looking at funding later. We've got some estimates for debt service and the impact on your various self-imposed ratios. Again, once again, I think you're gonna find it's really very important to recognize the policies you've got are putting you in good stead, keeping you in good stead, and we're going nowhere near broaching those policies by incorporating any of these. In fact, I think you're gonna be very, very pleased to see how little impact it really has on your overall policies. So, let's talk a little bit about the projects that are right now eminent. They come to something just under $13 million. This is nothing new. There are two projects. One is really the, if you would, the landfill project that's been out there. I would say for the public's benefit, we have gone as long as we can possibly go before issuing debt. That's been our mindset, especially since debt is affordable, but it's certainly not at 2% interest rates. And if it was, that'd be a little different. But, by historical standards, and you'll see that in a minute, rates are still quite good. We always will have the opportunity to refinance for possibly better rates is the way we'll set up this financing with your ultimate approval. In addition, the second bullet point there underneath, we have outstanding a line of credit. We did that a couple of years ago. And this would be just a takeout of that line of credit to do it simultaneous with the landfill, take advantage of economies of scale, recognizing, again, that it's time that we do that. The other couple of points here is we basically feel like it's a good time and it meets all of our goals and objectives. So, this next page talks about those goals and objectives, one of which is to make sure we continue to have our very strong credit ratings. You'll see there, there's a variety of different letters. Some look a little bit strange. One is a large A and then a small A and the others are large A. It's not a typo, actually. It's the way different rating agencies have their pronouncements, if you would. But, basically, they're all saying the same thing, and that is that you are effectively one step below AAA, which is the highest any of them will give you. I think part of the reason we're not AAA really has to do with our size in terms of your population and the demographics. We actually have solid demographics, but we also have a lot of retirees. So, the actual overall demographics are lower than sometimes what you'll see in AAA credits. But nevertheless, you are very, very high. I was fortunate to be here when you got your first rating some 25 years ago and it was a whole category below where you are now. So, you've gone up. You've never backtracked. You just continue to move up or to maintain these very high credit ratings. Now, a couple of other points here. The goals and objectives include making sure that the cash flow that you have is sufficient to take care of your, both your debt policies and your budgets. And that's something that, working with your staff, you've got an excellent financial officer, we feel good about that. We build in the cushion for that as well. Now, there's another point here, collateral. We're going to try our best not to even have any collateral on this, just the county's effect, good word. It's called a moral obligation. We'll find out if that's something that the marketplace will allow. Over the last couple of weeks, with all that's going on with the world of banks and finances, we may have to come back as part of the project and process and say, we need some collateral. We've used it in the past, but at the same time, it would be wonderful if we can just make it an even cleaner financing. Then, the next to last bullet point, maybe something I alluded to with regard to fund balances. Of course, you have very strong reserves. You have that one-time $20 million windfall, which is now being invested, and we wanna make sure that we continue to do that. The temptation is great to go take some of that. The reality is, that's earning an interest rate that's basically about what our cost of money will be. And it's better to have money in the bank, have that flexibility, particularly if some things don't work the way we want them to work down the road, when, if and when the economy turns around, and hopefully it won't. But again, it's my job to make sure we talk about it when things are good, and they are good now, but we need to talk about being prepared when they're not as good, because history has a way of repeating itself. So, finally, again, wanna make sure that we follow all we call best practices. So, I mentioned interest rates. When I started back around 1981, 82, a 20-year bond was almost 14%. That's what it was. Today, a 20-year bond is hovering around 4%. So, it was just a year ago, a little over a year ago, down hovering at that low of around 2%. And we took advantage of some of that when we did that, so remember we did that. But, again, for some new money that we're talking about here, by historical standards, the rates are very, very good. But again, they're not at the absolute bottom. Now, on this flip side here, this is called the Virginia SNAP rates. What's that mean? That's fancy name for the state non-arbitrage program. It's been around since, I remember we got it started about 1983, 1984. It's administered by the state treasurer. But, what that basically means is any monies that we borrow, we then can turn around and invest those monies as they're being spent out. For you, we're gonna spend the monies pretty quickly because part of the line of credit is to pay that back. But, the other, the landfill, that money more than likely will be spent very quickly. Nevertheless, the point is, you could see here, that was hovering almost about 0% earnings. Today, that's almost 5% in overnight monies administered by the state. So, we just know it's a good time to borrow, but it's an even better time to reinvest the money. So, especially, this is almost a proxy, if you would, for that $20 million that you've got. And I can tell you, the staff has also been careful not to over-assume when it comes to earnings on those monies. So, I feel like you're doing a very good job on both sides of the ledger. Okay, so, our proposed funding approach, I alluded to this. We're gonna recommend something we've done with you before, and that is what we call a public facility revenue bond. In Virginia, we are required to go through a economic development authority. In this case, it's your IDA. And they historically have been great partners with the county. They understand that they are part of the political and economic and social engine of the overall county. And as a result of that, they have historically allowed us to go through them to be able to borrow at the lowest possible costs and most flexible. Having said that, we're going to enter into preliminarily the public markets. And what that means is we put together an offering prospectus called an official statement. We then, we use effectively the public competitive markets and we say, if the markets hold the way they are right now, that whoever firm, whatever firm provides us the most cost-effective money, the most flexible money that we're looking for, we set the parameters and we'll do that. And you'll have a time to review and approve that later on next month. Then, we hope to get some bids. If we don't like what we get, we can reject them without any cost to us, us meaning the county. We can talk about another way of procuring the money. It's not as if there's only one way to do that. But, again, given all the things going on right now, we still think this is the most cost-effective, but you've been around me before. I wanna make sure we don't just think that's exactly what we'll do, but if we change that, you will know that as well. So, with that said, let's talk a little bit about what debt would be added and what we're gonna do. This is your debt profile. You've seen this before from the finance officer, you've seen it from us. On the left-hand side, I thought graphically you could see how your debt service is right now. That's all your debt, and that even includes your interim debt interest of there. Now, you'll notice here, we've cut that off on June 30th of '22. That's your end of your fiscal year. That's why we've done that. Obviously, throughout the fiscal year of '23, some payments get made, but we just wanted to show you for a moment of time, like we've always done. You can see there, you have a little bit under $40 million of principal outstanding, total payments of about $48 million. And we'll show you how that looks in a few minutes relative to your policies. But, a couple of incredible, incredible important points here. You'll notice that it drops down very substantially, very quickly. That is what's going to allow us to add in this new debt, take out this line of credit and pay it permanently and still stay basically at or below the 2023 debt level. So, we're gonna talk a bit about that. We've made some estimates. We've got some information in the back, but suffice it to say, we won't be able to do this without asking for any equivalent tax increases. That's important. And we've done that. You know, I'm proud of this, 'cause from all this debt that you've issued, I've been around to see all this being issued over the last 25 years. And we try to set this up in such a way so that we can realize that there's gonna be needs down the road, five years from now, 10 years from now, and certainly after I'm gone. So, let's just talk a couple pages here on what this does to your self-imposed policies. And this policy here basically says your level of debt, that roughly $38, $40 million, when you compare that to the overall assessed value, the real estate, the taxable assessed value of the county, it's barely one-half of 1%. That is well below your policy of 3.5%. And actually, it's well below your comparison, as I've done before, to a lot of your neighbors. You're really in a very, very strong position. That light green is that projected debt. And so, again, take some comfort that we're nowhere as near close to being in your policy governor, if you would, which is that red line. So, the next one, I think, is really the most important one, and that's the next policy, and that's your debt service as a percentage of expenditures. I've told you all this before. That's what I call your credit card, you know, basically, how many pennies on every dollar is it that you're taking in debt? So, I like to tell the citizens, to give you perspective, if you're fortunate enough to own a home, let's say you have a $100,000 mortgage, what you like to see is not having more than 25 cents or 25% of your income in a given month. Go to pay the debt service, go to pay your credit card, if you would. You are less than 4% of your credit card. You are less than 5 cents of every dollar goes to pay debt service. When you layer in the proposed debt, you're even, again, you're well below your 4%. So, again, you're in terrific shape. 10% is that governor. A lot of folks come right up to that line, maybe go above that line, but you are nowhere as near that line. And even with ultimately the literary loan program, if you get the school projects, you're gonna stay well below that into the foreseeable future. And that's not by happenstance, it's by design. And again, wanna make sure everybody recognizes that. So, last page here, our, if you would, timetable, our requests of you. Really, no particular request today, other than education. We are here, the 21st, making the presentation. We are here the 21st, making the presentation, talking about the timeframe. We would ask that at the April 18th, the joint meeting of the IDA and the board, we approve the various documents necessary to move forward. Those are prepared primarily by bond counsel, with legal counsel, your county attorney reviewing. We, of course, are very much a part of that. And that's just the thinking is April 18th. Then in early May, ideally, we'll be talking to the rating agencies. They, of course, have ratings out there for you, as I mentioned. Even if we don't talk to them, they basically continually monitor what's happening here in Franklin County. Nevertheless, if we want to do a more formalized financing, we've got to go back to them and say, here's some things we want to do, and that's part of the process. We've done that with you before, when we did Summit View and some other things. So nothing out of the ordinary, but the hope is, if the entire finance world doesn't go mad, we would like to try to get ratings in mid-May and sell this around the 5th of June, short of something surprising. And then closing it, ideally, doesn't have to be, but ideally, closing it by the end of the June, by the fiscal year, which of course is the end of June. So if we can do that. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman, appreciate it.
Any questions, Mr. Rose?
Mr. Rose, thank you for being with us.
Thank you.
You're always a delight to have. Just a couple of quick questions. Our debt policies, fiscal policy guidelines, well, does or should what's going on in the marketplace influence whether we should look at those again or change those in any way?
That's a very good question. So we talk about formally looking at your policies every couple, three, four years. But we've continued to do that. If you remember, we've added to some of your policies, and we've done that in the last couple of years. You know, frankly, we are interacting with your staff literally on a weekly basis, even away from, let's say, formal financings. We're always talking to them. So we're always thinking about whether the policies are up to date, which is why I made the first comment this afternoon about your fund balances, especially now, because it's budget time. So we would just like to see those stay above the threshold, even though it's a solid number, and the rating agencies won't penalize you for going right, let's say, to the margin, we would think it's not a prudent move to do that. I say that because with the uncertainties, with all the things going on with the banks, with inflation, what have you, we just think it's more safe to be careful and cautious. And the other thing, again, for the citizens, let them understand that when you have those excess dollars, those excess dollars are working for you. They are producing interest, which in turn makes the overall budget less stressful for all of you. So it's not as if the money is just sitting there, not being productive for your budgets. It's being very productive for your budgets, and that's sort of the takeaway. So you really are gaining it by virtue of, it helps to strengthen your fund balance, it helps to strengthen your credit ratings, it prepares you, as cash is king, for what will inevitably be some downturn in the country. Just don't know how it's going to hit Franklin County and when, but history just seems to always repeat itself. So let's hope it's a long way off, but that's my take on looking at your policies.
Just one more question, if I may. The graphic representations that you gave us on where we are with our debt, with respect to the policies, is there any consideration in those representations for the HVAC middle school project? I know CTE is probably not in there yet.
Right.
But can you just give me some brief comments about those two things?
Absolutely. So back in November, when we made the more detailed work session, as I recall, and IDA representatives were there, I think school folks were there as well, if I'm not mistaken. We've been at a number of these. We incorporated those estimates into these kind of ratios. And what happened was, even incorporating the CTE and just projects, nothing per se saying this dollars for this, but just globally, adding a fair amount of dollars, we kept within the policies, and we were well under the policies. So from that perspective, we would cite that November report. I didn't bring it with me, but I know that we're well under those policies. And if we weren't, we would not have recommended, or we would have said, you know what, these other things would blow your policies, you need to know that. So they did not. And so again, we incorporated that.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Mr. Cundick?
Hope I asked this question correctly. What percentage of a dollar goes to debt service that we have?
About 4% of every dollar. 4 cents on every dollar goes to debt service. Your policy's 10 cents, not to exceed 10 cents on every dollar.
So we're well below that.
You are less than half of your policy, which is a positive thing.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Rose.
Thank you.
Always a pleasure to see you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter, you're up.
Am I going to be nervous?
I think we're in good hands.
Better than Allstate.
Well, we just got good news. I hope you continue on with it.
Thank you. Appreciate that, yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I can't promise that I have, you know, a lot better news than we've had the last couple of months, but you know, I'll see what we can do. So let me get the finance report. Can you play that for me? That blue box is now down in the bottom right corner, and I can't click on it. I can't see the top either. There it is. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So members of the board, so for our finance update for the month, this is through the end of February, and so we would look eight months out of the fiscal year. We'd be looking at about 66, 67% of the budget is what we would expect. And so for the revenue side, that's what we would expect for collections, especially around those monthly collections that we have with taxes. So our property taxes, of course, are not monthly. They're typically once or twice a year. For other local taxes, they are. You can see we're well above that 67% mark, 78%. The one that we just mentioned a little bit is that revenue from use of money in property. That's our interest earnings. So that's up over budget 257%. That's because of two things. That's because of increased deposit balances at our bank accounts, and that's because of increased interest rates that we're earning. And so those two items that we as staff, and of course, in coordination with our treasurer's office, have tried to work to earn as much money as possible. And as Mr. Rose said, that helps to relieve pressure on the budget, as you can earn and put the money to work for you that we're trying to manage. So on the percent expenditure side, that percentage of budget, you can see we're pretty much within that 66, 67% range or lower. So everything other than this point is where we would expect to be. No major concerns. So to graphically show that for you, you can see kind of the chart. We would be similar compared year-over-year, about where we would typically want to be. There's not a lot of variation on the revenue side. And to break that out by categories, you can see a similar thing. So for your property taxes, again, till we really get into our second half of real estate, we'll have a better comparison. So that's why it's a little lower compared to prior year, but your other local taxes and your state revenue are pretty much even compared to where they were this time last year. So real estate tax, we are above 50% of the budget, which is good. That's where we want to be with the first half collections in. We will have bills going out once we, you would probably hope to by end of April, for that June 5th due date, where we would want those. Middle of April would be ideal for those, that second half real estate bill. And so those will start becoming collected over the next couple of months, and so that number will get closer. But as far as where we would expect to be through February, percent of budget, we're doing well for real estate. So now, personal property, there's good news and bad news still on that. So good news is, we're still about 1.4 million growth over last year. That's about a 10.5% increase. However, we're only at 94% of the budget, and so we have about $900,000 that we still need to collect between now and June to meet budget. And that's atypical. So we are concerned we will not meet budget for personal property for this fiscal year. So we're continuing to monitor. Because of, you know, collections have been soft, we may see higher collections in the remaining months of this fiscal year than we have typically seen. So something we're looking at, but we've got to make up 800,000 or 900,000 to get to meet budget by this point at the end of June. So we're monitoring. Now, because of the increased revenue other areas, we're not overall concerned, but that is something we look at, and that's something we take into consideration when we're looking, of course, as we're in next fiscal year's budget planning stages as well with our projections. So for our sales taxes, we are seeing a growth rate of 6.7%, which is about 316,000. That is good, and that is about 78% of the budget. So 10, 11% over where we would want to be. So sales taxes are still growing. We did see a drop in sales tax, though. It was 7.9% last month. So the year-over-year contracted a little bit when we looked at February. And February, if you remember, was the big collection, because it's two months behind. So that was December Christmas season, sales taxes. So we are, we're hoping that that kind of normalizes and levels off for the rest of this fiscal year. Now, the positive is, for meals and occupancy, we're seeing increases when we compare year-over-year. So meals tax is up 6.5% year-over-year. It was 4.9% last month, so we are seeing an increase there. You can see graphically, see if I can get this, you can see the gap there, so that's positive. We had a good February, or actually, a good January, we collected in February. So for occupancy taxes, we're seeing similar. It's up year-over-year 39.3%, about 92,000, and that is up, it was 34.1% last month. So we are seeing improvement in our meals and occupancy. We did see a little bit of a decline in sales, but still up year-over-year overall. So for expenditures, just to show you that, you can see we're about even with, for February, where we would expect to be graphically across our major categories for our expenditures. Sum up a little bit, you would expect that with the implementation of the compensation study and the plan, but there are no particular items driving that, other than general inflation, whether that's labor market or utilities, things of that nature. Health and welfare, we like to keep an eye on this one. So for CSA, we're still seeing reasonable expenditures. We still think we'll have some excess there when you look at a year-over-year comparison by the time we're done with June, but not as significant as we have seen it in years past. And your social services, you're kind of up a little bit in operating, but down over their overall programs, a lot of those federal-supported ones. So overall, for their budget, still doing okay, and their will within budget. So even though they're over prior year, our social services department is within the budget parameters where we'd expect them to be, so no concerns overall there. So the fund balances and reserves that Mr. Rose mentioned, so our 20% policy limit, there really no change since last month. We're still 6.8 million above that 20% limit. There have been no other dedications from the board, things of that nature, that would pull that balance down at this point. And we do have the separate reserves that budget stabilization at $1 million, and our capital reserve at just over $1 million. So as mentioned, capital project update, so we did submit the literary loan application to Virginia Department of Education, and so that was confirmed February 7th. We are awaiting response on that, to see if we were awarded. The difference there is just going to be in the interest rate. So our interest rate through the literary loan would be 3% borrowing cost. It would probably be higher than that if we were not awarded and had to go borrow on our own, not guaranteed. We would certainly look at all options. There's the VPSA, Virginia Public School Authority. We could also issue it, of course, ourselves. There are options there, but they may come with a higher borrowing rate. So that was the reason for the literary loan application. That 3% rate is generally going to be lower than what we'd find in the market right now. And so, of course, that update was already provided to you on the landfill projects and the permanent financing of the 2019 line of credit, since Mr. Rose went through, all within policy limits and no concerns on that, trying to keep that moving forward. So economic update, or CPI, did increase 6% in February, when you compare year-over-year. The next Federal Reserve, the actual committee that sets those interbank borrowing rates is the Federal Open Market Committee. So their meeting's not scheduled till later this month. I think it actually straddles the month, so it's March and first part of April, over a two- or three-day period. And so at first, you know, I'd still say a federal funds rate hike is likely. However, with the recent upheaval in some of the banking sector, they may decide to pause that. We'll kind of see what goes on there. But one thing I would want to say is that in Virginia, we, banks are required to have collateral for public deposits, and it is the Securities for Public Deposits Act. So what happened in some of that banking is a lot harder to happen in Virginia, especially for public deposits, because they're required to collateralize them. That collateral can vary. Sometimes it's 50%, sometimes it's 100%, depends on the banking institution. So as far as that goes, we're in a lot better situation than what kind of has been in the news on some of those banks and what they were investing in. And Virginia regulates the collateral that banks can use. They are typically very secure investments, so it's not something that's speculative in nature. So our deposits, in Virginia especially, are pretty safe when you consider. So I wanted to bring that up as well, in case the board had questions on that or was unsure. So of course, we monitor. Everything has risk to it, but you know, with our deposits and what we have and what we're invested in, there's a lot, a lower risk of any considerable action happening from our risk to our deposits. And so with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Carter?
I have a quick one.
Go ahead.
If I may. Mr. Carter, on that 94% on collections, I believe it was for personal property.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any idea of the aging on the collections at this point? Has it been long enough to look at any trends on the aging?
I do not have an updated February report. I did look at it as of January, and so a lot of, I mean, so for personal property, we typically go back about five years, and that's, I think, pretty sure that's code of Virginia, not county code. And we kind of write that off after that, and that's just policy. Real estate's different along our horizon. So looking five years on that aging, that usually, the way it looks to be, you know, your current year, you typically have the highest amount outstanding as you'd expect, and then that drastically drops off. By the time you get to year three, four, five, it's, from a percentage standpoint, very low as far as that outstanding debt. So really, when I looked at in January, we still had about a million and a half outstanding on our personal property. So if you remember, I need 900,000. So if we collected it, the assessment is there, but it is a little bit higher than where we saw outstanding at this point in time last year. I think it was around the 300,000 to 500,000 mark higher from outstanding at that point in time.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we continue with your next item.
Okay. Well, I do not have a PowerPoint for that, but it's the executive summary in your packets. And so for our, it is also that time of the year to do our insurance renewals, and so for health, dental, and vision. And so you've heard some of this in some of our budget work sessions, and so for our health insurance, so the way we go through, we do typically every five years. There could be circumstances that vary that, but we issue a request for proposals for our insurance. And so the way those are typically structured, they can be structured a couple of ways, but a lot of them are an annual renewal at that point. So if we go through an annual renewal, we lock in that year, and then we could procure again. Now, that is more applicable to health. Dental and vision typically have rate locks for multiple years, and so that may vary. So for our renewal, and these would all be effective July 1st, this is for our new fiscal year, but it fiscal year, but it allows us time to plan. That's why they're here for you now. So, for health insurance, as we mentioned, there was a very poor claims year, several high-dollar claims, a lot of it looking, they were significant diagnoses. A lot of it tended to be not what I would say treatable conditions. It was a sense of people probably delayed going to the doctor, and by the time they went to the doctor during COVID, after COVID was done or over, the condition had gotten much worse, so you had significant medical treatment. So, it was 28% was Anthem's initial renewal, not unexpected. Our consultants, USI, projected that back in December. They said, "Your claims are looking bad. This is probably going to be where you're at." And it, it was. So, we did negotiate down to a 25% increase with Anthem. We were able to work with them on some of those high-dollar claims for various circumstances and reasons as far as the circum, the, the age of the participants or spouses and all of that. And so, but 25% was as, as far as we could get. We did ask at that point, well, should we go out to the market? And the answer was, well, you're, there's only really two in this region. That's Anthem and Aetna. And really, with your claims, you're probably not going to do a lot better with either one of them based on what they're looking at. Because I think what's happening is the market itself ensures, because they're the ones on the hook if we go over what they collect in our claims. So, they're trying to cover their losses, essentially is what it sounds like I'm seeing in the market. And so, the answer was, well, then here's the renewal, and so, we're going to work through that. So, we got, we have the 25% renewal. What we're probably going to look at with Anthem, we have one more optional renewal year, and then we'll be looking to issue an RFP for that. So, back to that cycle we were talking about, there is something that we do continue with, with keeping our rates competitive as best we can. And so, so what we're looking at with the 25%, we were able to propose in the budget, the fiscal year 2024 budget, covering 18% of the employee increase. So, there would only be a 7% increase for the employee, and then the, the county would, would pick up the remainder of that. So, their 18%, the employee 18%, plus the county's 25% portion. So, we did what we could, but we couldn't get all the way to holding employees harmless with available. And so, I'll go through rates, but for the same thing, now, this year, we did do a, an RFP for dental and vision. And so, what we're recommending to you is that we award to the dental, to Delta Dental, which is our current carrier. They have expansive network, and we were able to add benefits to that plan, similar to what we saw in the employee survey about health and dental. So, what it would do would increase the maximum, and that's the, kind of the maximum cap that before, that you would have for your services, from $1,500 to $2,000 of your insurance benefit, and also add implants and adult orthodontia. So, that, that was a, a benefit we could add, something that wasn't covered in the current plan. So, we were able to do a two-year rate lock for a 4.75% increase on the dental plan with those enhancements. On the vision, we're recommending awarding to IMED, that is the current provider as well. And so, the, there was a benefit enhancement there, but the only enhancement was currently the plan is you have a discount on frames every 24 months. We asked to increase it to every 12 months. And the thought process there, we have a lot of family plans, well, parents with children who may be playing sports or things that get broken once every 24 months could be costly. So, that, that was a four-year rate lock agreement for about 11.8% increase. Now, what does that mean, dollars and cents? So, the attachments behind in your packet, I just wanted to highlight a couple of them, just so you get a general idea of what that looks like. So, the first page is the medical, and so, that's going to be the Anthem. And so, if you look, we have two plans. So, there's the Key Care 30 Plan, which is the better, the richer insurance plan of the two options. And then, there's the high deductible plan with the health savings account. So, if you look at the second column from the right, and where it says EE per pay period for dollar change, that's going to be the increased amount of the monthly premium for our employees. So, if you could look at the, the Key Care 30, that top plan for employee-only coverage would increase $6.05 a month. That would be the employees' premium portion. And then, you can see the tiers down. We have plus child, employee plus children, employee plus spouse, and then employee family is the, the highest tier. So, that would increase $37.45 a month. That is the 7% increase that, that we will have to pass on to employees. For the high deductible plan, employee only would be $4.56 a month increase, and then it is tiered, but the, the most expensive for family would be $28.24. All right? So, that would be if, as proposed, the 7% increase passed on to employees with the county picking up the other 18%. Okay? So, if you flip the page for the dental rates, so that was that 4.75% increase we were looking at, and, and our tiers are, are similar. We, we, the only difference is we do employee, child, or spouse and family. We do not have employee plus children tier in the dental. But that monthly EE change, again, that second column from the right, is for employee only, premiums would go up 78 cents. For family, they would go up $2.61 a month. And then, for the, the next page finally is the vision, and so, you can see the, the monthly rates. And so, typically, the vision, the county doesn't really contribute to that. That's 100% employee cost on the vision plan. So, the employee-only rate would go to $8.76, which is about an 80 cents per month increase. And the family plan would go to $25.74 per month. That's a $2.35 increase for, for our employees. So, with that, that's the, that's the rates that would occur and be effective July 1st, pending board approval. So, staff, of course, is recommending that with the renewing with Anthem, with the rates as proposed, and awarding the RFP for dental and vision insurance to Delta Dental and IMED with those rates proposed. So, with that, be happy to, well, there are a lot of numbers, but be happy to answer any questions or maybe follow up with some detail if you have questions.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Carter? Don't see any questions.
Okay.
Good job.
Okay.
Need a motion?
Yes, ma'am, if there's a motion.
Yes.
I make a motion to award the dental and vision insurance, RFP, to Delta Dental for dental insurance, and to IMED for vision insurance, and to approve the FY 2023-24 health, dental, and vision rates as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve these rates as presented. Any discussion before we take a final vote? Madam Kirk, can you do a roll call, please?
Supervisor Tommy Cundis?
Yes.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
No.
Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Mike Carter?
Yes.
Chairman Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Thompson is absent for the vote.
Thank you.
You did good, Bron.
You did that, Miss Cundy.
All right, Mr. Sandy.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The next item on your agenda is the Solar Siding Agreement for Constitution Solar LLC. If you recall, this was on your agenda last month for public hearing and discussion. There were questions that were raised during the meeting. We had, if you recall, there was a, a vote that was put forth that ended in a tie, and so, there was, in essence, no action that was taken on that item. So, the folks from Constitution Solar are back today to present some additional information, maybe answer some of those questions that came up last time. I understand, as far as the, the makeup of the board, we may be in the same situation with six, missing one member, but as I spoke to the chairman earlier, since it was kind of short notice, I think that we, we got the notice that we would be short. The folks for, are here, they've traveled from out of town, so it'd be my recommendation that we allow them to kind of present some additional information for your information, and then see if at that point, there's any action that's ready to be taken or potentially carry it over to your next, to your next meeting at that point. So...
Okay.
If that's a, if that's the will of the board, I'll ask them to come forward and present some additional information.
By all means.
Good afternoon. Thank you, members, for taking the time to hear us again today. I totally understand Mr. Thompson not being able to be with us. Unfortunately, I was unable to be with us last month due to a family emergency, so we do appreciate your, your time today. I am here today to represent Constitution Solar from the perspective of the originating developer, NCRE. I will go over some, for the benefit of, of others that might not have heard before, I will go over some of the materials that you guys heard last month, but hopefully, we can address some of your concerns today and get a favorable vote. Constitution Solar is a proposed four-megawatt solar energy facility. Oh, I'm trying to click my computer. Sorry, guys. Again, I'm, I'm here to represent NCRE, the originating developer. We are in co-development with Catalyze. You guys got to hear from, a representative from Catalyze, who's going to take the project through construction and owner later.
State your name for the record, please.
Oh, I do apologize. My name is Alexandria Walling. I am the general, general manager of NCRE, head of origination and development.
Thank you.
Okay. So, NCRE and Catalyze have a co-development. NCRE is local to Virginia and the Carolinas, originating projects anywhere from two megawatts to very large utility scale, 150-megawatt projects. The project we're going to discuss today is a four-megawatt project, I apologize, four-megawatt project located in Franklin County. This is outside of the city and zoning limits. This is located along Virgil Good Highway, where Henry Road meets it. This is a 160-acre parcel, but the project will only take up approximately 40 acres of that. We are connecting to the existing APCO distribution line along the highway there, and looking to put on single-access tracker system. Here I have for you guys a, a view of the proposed site plan. As you can see, we are not using the entire parcel. I know that there had been some confusion on that before. A lot of consideration was put into the placement of the premises and the system for this. We took into consideration the interconnection, the visibility, and feedback from the community. We have proposed to have a 20-foot landscape buffer around the entire, around the project. You can see on the map here exactly where that's going to be located. I apologize. Let me get to my notes. We also took efforts to minimize the impact on the existing 130 acres of existing woodlands within the site. This slide shows part of the proposed landscaping plan, again, with considerations of trying to minimize any impact on the existing woodlands there. Our project will only require about 10% of that removed for our particular part of the site. I say that very carefully because I do not want to infringe upon our landowner's rights to deal with the, the rest of the timber on the land however they see fit, but our project specifically only needs to, to remove 10% of that existing woodland. I know that that was a, a topic of discussion before. In addition to that, we are committed to planting within the landscape buffer area. That is, the plan for that is roughly 217 shrubs, 119 canopy trees, and 117 understory trees. So, that will add about a, a little less than two acres of what has been cleared for our particular project. In addition to that, we will be working to put some native pollinator seeding down on, on the site. As you can see, we've got, we've got some renderings here, and I'll, I'll allow you guys to ask any questions about that at the close. This next slide here shows a photo simulation from the site entrance. This is located on the northwest corner, kind of where the highway is turning, and this is where we're going to have our site entrance. What I'd like to also note on this particular slide, if you can see in the top left-hand corner, working with the community and getting some of the feedback, we decided in our design to remove a portion of the arrays that would have previously been located on that west side of the property. And as you guys can see here, not so much on your printed-out slides, but what you can see on your printed-out slide is we've put together some renderings and simulations of what that landscape buffer is going to look like. If I click on it here, you can see the existing, how, how it exists currently as it grows. This will be within one year of what it should look like. And then, the final picture, which is what you can see printed out, is what it will look like in five years' time. In addition to these considerations, we are working to put a rather stringent stormwater management plan in place. These temporary erosion and sediment control devices will be reviewed by Franklin County and the VADEQ. Some of these devices include diversion ditches, temporary sediment basins, silt fence, velocity-controlled check dams and waddles. And we have also committed to have an onsite stormwater manager that will be doing daily inspections and weekly reports throughout the construction, which I'm sure you saw within the siding agreement itself. Permanent stormwater controls will be reviewed by the VADEQ, installed to reduce the stormwater runoff rates. And if you have any questions about that, I will actually ask that my colleague step up, who has quite a bit more expertise on that. In doing our siding and our planning, we have tried to take into consideration the effect on the neighborhood character. I did mention that there will be pollinator habitats and seeding throughout the site. The planting of this restorative local vegetation will be beneficial to soil and soil stabilization, stabilization. And recent studies have also found that the pollinator and nutrient-rich plants can increase the future farm production of the premises itself after the project and during the life of it. And research also shows higher yield for nearby farmers cultivating the crops. Our design is also calling for simple pile-driven post, post racks, which does not require cement. So, these will be directed into the ground. Another benefit is that our, our low-profile panels are typically lower than the mature, than, than a mature corn stalk. And we're also, as you guys saw, proposing the vegetative screening to mitigate the visual impacts on the surrounding area. In consideration of the neighborhood character, we've had a number of community meetings where we've allowed the neighbors to come and speak to us about some of their concerns and dress, and address those within our plans. Number one, I think everyone here, the, the whole reason why we're here, is that even though we are outside of the zoning limitation, we have agreed to abide and incorporate terms of the zoning ordinance within our siding agreement. Number two, another big one, as I showed you on the previous slide, we removed a portion of the array for the project after community feedback. We've also heard our neighbors and have committed to no longer utilize barbed wire on the upper portion of the fencing, well, on the fencing at all. There are other project benefits. We, we find that many of the neighbors that we have on existing projects find that these solar farms are actually very passive, secure neighbors with very low traffic impacts, except for one we'll talk about in just one second. And also, to be able to provide our landowners, we don't go in and buy the land underneath our projects. We work with existing landowners so that it can provide a diverse... our projects. We work with existing landowners so that it can provide a diversified revenue stream for them and allow them to continue ownership of their land. One special thing about this particular project, which I can let someone else speak a little bit further on this, is the landowner is working with the county to implement the V-dot Intersection Safety Improvement Project, allowing, agreeing to work through some easements on that property when that project comes to fruition. Another huge benefit, which I think is great to hear after the presentation we also just heard, is the difference in the tax revenue that the project will bring forth to the community. The, we do have a breakdown of what's been modeled, which, over 35 years, the project will bring over $480,000 to the county. If you'd like me to pull up that chart to go through that breakdown, I can do that as well. And that's in comparison to the past 10 years of the project, has only produced revenues of a little over $6,000. Another benefit to the project is allowing the county to be part of one of the fastest-growing employment industries in the United States. This particular project, we've spoke with potential EPCs on the project and have been able to put together the numbers for full-time equivalent employees that will be employed throughout the construction. That will be the equivalent of 120 craft workers, tradesmen, however you prefer to pronounce that. That construction, though, and those employment levels will change throughout the project, so you're not going to have a huge impact at all times of that many employees onsite. At the height of construction, there will be probably around 70 workers at a time. And I've also provided just a little review of some of the numbers associated with Virginia, pulled directly from the Solar Census of 2021, the most recent information that's available, to show that solar is providing quite a few jobs. The solar jobs in Virginia are ranked 16th, and the growth is more than 11%. I also did a breakdown of, in that employment, the typical annual averages on local hires versus non-local hires. The county's success is our success, and we want to work with the county to employ as many local employees as practical. Certain federal regulations right now are also making that a lot easier for us, so we're very committed to bringing that benefit, not only in employment numbers, but also into the benefits that those employees will be able to expend in the community throughout the construction phase. And I'm not the best public speaker, so I might have rushed through a little bit of that. For, to close our presentation, though, I would like to invite the landowner up to say a statement, and then happy to open up the floor to any questions you guys have.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for allowing us to say a few words. First of all, she mentioned runoff. This is two old ball fields, very small part of 160 acres. It's up on a ridge, never have had any runoff. And I have looked at a very small solar project just south of the old Lanahan School. It's run by Andrew Bowman, talked to him, and also talked to Ed Goode when he was living. He recently passed away. In that, they have over 200, around 200 dairy cattle. They have their dairy farm, facility, the milking facility, all of which is located downhill from the solar panels. Never been a problem. He has goats, hadn't even fenced off the panels. Now, these are going to be fenced off, hadn't fenced off the panels. Has goats in there, the only thing that's ever happened. Has the cattle in there, no fence around it. One cow fell into one panel over the last five years and had to replace that. So it really has not been any danger from any runoff. It's nothing, nothing runoff. He's been very satisfied with it. And for him personally, it's been financially good. He sells the power generated by the panels to AppCo at wholesale. And then on his farm, they charge him the retail rate, which, of course, they should. But they also write him a check every month because the panels produce enough energy that he is a neck, he's an exporter of energy to the AEP grid. And I don't, I'm speaking with my sister, her husband may want to say a few words. And they, we are the biggest landowner around the area that's going to have the panels. There are a few lots up the road on 220, but on the south side, we're the landowner. And really, on the west side, we are too. And we've not heard any objection from any of the landowners that live near it. It's, like I said, on that side of the road, it's not that many landowners anyway. If you have any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Virgil?
Yes.
Thank you, Virgil.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board.
My name's James Brumfield, and I'm Betsy Goode's spouse. I've been in the area now for about 10 or 12 years, a retiree that moved here. Up until we moved into town here, we lived on the farm, spent a lot of time cleaning it up, a lot of work. And if you go down there by that curve today, you'll notice an old house that was back in the woods. I drug it out onto the street and cleaned it up, and it looks like a brand-new one. The power's going to be up on that hill behind there, it'll be well-protected. It's going to generate money besides tax revenue from a house or a vacant field. And I can tell you, I tried running cattle there, I tried planting crops there, I tried raising hay there. Downhill battle, not much more than a ball field. I think that Virgil found the best use of that when he was a kid. But I think it's a great project. I see these things everywhere I go. I think this one has been well-thought-out. It's not going to do much, except it's going to help a family retain a farm that they've owned for 75 years. Keeping it in the family should be important for all of us. I appreciate the time and look forward to a favorable vote. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Brumfield? Thank you.
Again, thank you for listening to us, and I'll open the floor to questions.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Mr. Sandy, I don't know that the board is in position to take any action at this time unless any members have changed their stance from last month.
Yeah, I think it's up to the board. I'll look to our attorney for maybe some guidance, but I would guess, I would say is if there's no action this time, it would, it would carry over to the next meeting, but I'm not sure if there's any specific policies the board has on that, as to whether you have to take any action this evening or not.
No, I don't think so.
No, I don't think so. If you're just going to vote three to three again, it'll carry over again.
Yeah.
May as well table.
Okay. Do we need a motion to table it, or just let it go with no action?
You can table it if you want to take some affirmative action. If you don't take any action, it's going to carry over anyway.
I guess for the applicant's sake would just be knowing maybe what the next opportunity would be, just for their schedules, maybe.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So there'll be no action on this, taken at this time, so it will carry over?
Put it on the afternoon agenda for April.
Yes, yeah. Okay, my agenda is saying it's break time, so we're going to take about 10 minutes.
Thank you for having us here this afternoon. I'm here to speak about the proposed trail at the Smith Farm. I guess I wanted to first off share, send a message from Ms. Reba Dillon. She had an unexpected doctor's appointment this afternoon that she had to go attend, and if she could have been here, she would have, but she had to go attend to that. But also, I wanted to just, Mr. George Martin is, he's on our Recreation Advisor Commission. He's in the audience here today, too, so just wanted to point him out. Let's see here. So I wanted to, this goes back to Ms. Dillon's request that she brought to you all in August 16th of this past year, and she requested permission to build a trail over at, we call the Smith Farm, but it's a property there at 733 Crafts Ford Road. And at that time, as you all remember, you all expressed that you're supportive of the proposal, but you wanted to ensure that the trail did not interfere with the newly-established mitigation bank. And this mitigation bank, as you all know, is, a lot of time and energy's been spent and putting into it, and there's a lot of value with this mitigation bank. So there's some concerns about this trail might accidentally encroach in this mitigation bank, accidentally it might interfere with that. So there was some, you all wanted to see a survey done to make sure that didn't happen. All right, so since that August meeting, well, the initial estimates for the survey work was between $6,000 and $12,000. But since that meeting, we were fortunate enough to work with our staff, along with the GIS department. They worked with Timmons Group to use some existing survey work, to do that really all in-house and save Ms. Dillon that survey work. And I really got to point out, Mr. Chris Dodson, he's the field, he's the director of field operations with Timmons Group, and he was a big help on saving Ms. Dillon a lot of money so that if this does go forward, she can invest those funds into building a trail instead of doing some survey work. So the proposed trail that Ms. Dillon is proposing will really follow the perimeter of the northern section of the Smith Farm, and that's really, it'll follow right along Lovely Valley, Crafts Ford, and Burnt Chimney Roads. The trail's designed so that it's inside the woods and will give a, you know, a good experience for people that are looking to, you know, on a natural trail, but it'll also be close enough to the roads if somebody were to say, twist their ankle and need to get out to nearby road, it'll be close by for that. The trail proposed right now will be natural surface, and that's just a fancy way of saying there'll be a dirt trail, just a natural dirt trail. And it's planned to be about 36 inches wide. Right now, the trail's also 5% or less grade. That means it's just fairly around here, that's about as flat as you can make a trail. People do not like steep trails, and having it 5% or less should make it appealing to all user groups, young, old, and all abilities. Ms. Dillon's proposal is that she'll organize all the donors and sponsors to construct the trail and provide all the finances to maintain it as well. Just as a recap of all this, the trail does align well with conceptual plans for the park. They were approved, I believe, that was in 2016. It's supported by the Recreation Advisor Commission. This has been brought up and discussed numerous times, the Recreation Advisor Commission, and they've been very supportive of trail development, really all kind of recreation development at the Smith Farm. And I also too want to point out, it addresses one of the biggest recreational requests that we get is for more trails. Trails, walking, and biking, equestrian use is just a huge request that I hear and my coworkers hear all the time. And gosh, statewide and national surveys, it's hit time and time again. So trails are one of the things that's great that it serves our current residents and is also a great thing to provide for attracting new residents and for tourism efforts as well. As you're likely aware, the, this, likely where the Smith Farm is, under an agricultural lease. If the board does wish to permit Ms. Dillon from building this trail, the lease will have to be amended to allow for that. I think there's been some discussions made, and that doesn't appear to be, you know, a difficult task to do, but if you all were to, you know, permit this project to go forward, our suggestion would be to amend the lease and bring it back to you all at a future meeting. So that's, Mr. Mike Burnett might have some questions about the mitigation bank if that comes up, or if there are any questions about the trail or this project. I'd be happy to answer anything that you might have.
Anyone have any question? Go ahead, Mr. Carter.
I have a question about the lease, amending the lease. What is that going to entail roughly?
Do you want to answer that? Yeah, I can answer that, Mr. Carter. So we are on a month-to-month agricultural lease with, with Mr. Monte Brown out there. In your packet, you actually have a map that shows the, or the proposed trail. And the Smith Farm is actually bisected by two different roads, so it's almost in quadrants. So what we would probably propose to you guys is that the quadrant that this trail would be in would actually be amended out of the lease so that you, you wouldn't have any interaction between the two.
And what does he do on that quadrant?
Very little on that piece. It's almost all wooded area. There is a small area that's cleared in behind the Napoli Cowboy that Ms. Dillon would like to use that for the parking area, so he would lose that. And there's a little piece that we may or may not want to take out that's more down at the intersection of the road. But those are the only two cleared pieces in the entire quadrant.
Thank you.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you guys for helping us through this. Question, Mr. Chapman, on the trail. We are going to maintain this trail as a county, correct?
Ms. Dillon is proposing that the, that she'll maintain the trail?
Now, I'm just, because my subsequent question is, given that this has probably an in-perpetuity, you know, you know, action attached to it, should we have an MOU? Because those of us that are around today are not going to be around forever. And I'm wondering if we need to stipulate or just agree to on paper who's doing what, so that it's just agreed upon and understood by both parties. I don't want to make more of this than we need to, but I just worry about future conversations regarding what goes on, you know, at the Smith Farm, and that we might need to put some, you know, walls around, boundaries around the activities. What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good suggestion. I hadn't thought about that, but that would be, I mean, a good suggestion as far as things that are quickly forgotten a couple of years down the road, that kind of thing. It's, that would put things on paper just so we could go back and review what the original agreed-upon, yeah, the agreement was. So I think that's a great suggestion.
And let me ask a follow-up if I may, Mr. Chairman. I know that I have at home in my office a master plan where the Smith Farm was master-planned some years ago. Is there going to be any deliberate intention from your office and from, from you, Mr. Chapman, as to whether we pump the gas a little bit on that with this trail being developed? Do you feel that it's going to rise up in terms of your priorities to continue that master-planning development?
I'm not quite sure I understand the question. Are you hoping that this will speed things along as far as developing into a park?
I wanted to know what your opinion is about continuing with master-planning the Smith Farm.
Oh, I think if the board, that's really, we do it with whatever you all advise. I would love to see the Smith Farm developed into a recreational area. And that's my, I, the Recreation Advisor Commission feels strongly that it's a great asset. I mean, I would, I would love to see it, and I think a lot of other people would like to see that, but that's, of course, up to y'all's discretion and what available resources are. So if you all would like to see it, you know, planned, I would be very supportive of that.
Okay. I just know that, you know, over on this side of the county where the Smith property is, there is a large hunger, if you will, for parked space and a place to recreate. So I just, I know that the previous boards that I wasn't on, of course, got into this a little, in more depth, and I know it remains on our capital list as we sit today, I believe. So I just was wanting your opinion on that, Paul. I know that you're very supportive of the project, but I just didn't know if it had more of a sense of urgency to you now that we've got the ball rolling with the trail.
Yeah, I think this trail might be a good indicator that we could use to see if the trail's really popular. I expect that it will be, and I think it'll be a big hit, but that might be a good indicator for staff and the board. for staff and the board to see if there's, you know, how much of a need is out there. I anticipate that it'll be a big hit and people will, you know, want more. But that's the Parks and Recreation guy talking. I would love to see Parks and Recreation.
I gave you a launchpad here.
Yes, thank you, thank you for that. I'm always a little hesitant.
Thank you, Paul.
Yes.
Anyone else have, go ahead.
I really don't have a question, but I'd like to give a comment, and that is, I appreciate the county as usual stepping up and helping us, Ms. Dillon, with the project, with the, you know, saving us that kind of amount of money. I wholeheartedly thank the county for doing that. And I'd also like to thank Ms. Dillon, because she's really pushed this, and I think that fits the farm really good. So I really thank everybody for what they're doing to push this along, the county, Ms. Dillon, and whoever else is involved in it. I really appreciate it.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
I don't have any questions, just a comment. This is the first time I've seen this map plan with the future plans of a park down there. And I think this county should, yeah, I know we're just talking about doing the trails with Ms. Dillon, but I think, you know, is this your district or Tommy's?
It's Tommy's.
Tommy's.
Right, Tommy, you've got this in your district.
You what?
This is still in your district with the redistricting.
Yes, 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 the district, yes.
Yeah, our Parks and Rec are what I would consider top-notch, and we have some wonderful parks, and it'd be really cool to add one more, in my opinion. This is the first time I've seen this, and this is, this is really cool. I mean, you got a skeet shooting range, looks like you got some sports fields, some picnic shelters. I see a little yurt rental, RV tent camp, and that'd be great for anglers coming for these fishing tournaments. I'd like to know more about what this waterfront park is down there, but, because it's really shallow back in that cove. I don't know if you've been back in there or not, but it's really shallow and, you know, always want to try to protect a little bit of privacy for the, you know, the few people that are down in there, but, you know, I'd like to hear more about that. But I think this county should be looking at putting some funds aside to try to make this a destination here in the county. I'm assuming these black, little black dotted lines, that's the nutrient bank credits? Am I saying that right? Is that the area that's completely off limits? Over there near the existing house, existing barn?
Are you looking at the conceptual plan?
See the house here? These black dotted lines, is that where you, you're completely off limits to do anything?
This plan, Mr. Mitchell, was done right at the very beginning of the mitigation bank.
Predated it.
Yeah, and so what we're doing is identifying areas for potential recreation development that we might want to hold out instead of putting a mitigation bank or anything like that on.
So where, where's the off-limits areas?
So, Mr. Mitchell, the, if you look in your, in your packet, there's a sheet that shows Smith Farm proposed trail with a lot of green area on it. Looks like this.
Also, a large portion.
Large portion.
You're looking at the sheet before the map.
And.
There's a lot of this, you can't do anything with.
Well, a lot of what we've done with the, with the banks has been to, it's more of a preservation kind of thing. So along with, in here, you're seeing that some of the trail that we're proposing actually runs through the mitigation bank, so we can do some things like that to passive recreation. What we would want to, I think, if Paul would, would say that'd be the right way to go, is we did the twenty sixteen plan, it's much more of a conceptual plan, and we probably need to do updates to that and do an actual master plan for what we want to do, and that would coincide with the banks.
Yeah, I mean, it's really cool. Great use of the land if we can make it happen, too. Yeah, that's all I got.
All right, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, with that, I'd like to make a motion, please.
Okay, if you do, be sure to include the MOU in the motion.
Make sure, amendment, oh, yeah.
The, the MOU.
I think it's a potential amendment in the, in the reading. Anyway, I make a motion to authorize construction of multi-use trail by volunteers at the Smith Farm as described above to direct staff to review existing, according to lease on the property, but potential amendment at a future date. Does that cover what you were asking about?
I can propose an amendment to the motion, Mr. Condon.
What was your amendment?
The amendment would be that we also instruct staff to develop a memorandum of understanding to document the agreed-upon parameters of this agreement for purposes of the construction of the trail and maintenance.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the construction of the multi-use trail by volunteers at the Smith Farm, as well as the added MOU to the language. Any further discussion before we take a final vote? Okay, it says here we can take a voice vote on this, so all in favor of approving this motion, let me know I'm saying aye. All opposed, like sign? Or none opposed?
Mr. Chairman, can I just take a quick second to reiterate gratitude to Reba Dillon? She has been a champion for this project for years, and she is such a breath of fresh air, and she is Franklin County inside and out, and really demonstrates that in everything that she does. And I've been blessed to be able to work with her some on some of these things, and I just want to make sure that she understands that this board is in deep gratitude for her work.
And I would like to echo some of the comments made here today. Mr. Chapman, I'd like for you to relay to your staff the sincere appreciation that we have for them, all the hard work that they do for the citizens of Franklin County, the tremendous job, whether it's on mine of the county, or the east end of the county, or the north or south, you all do a wonderful job with, with the limited resources that we're able to give you. But, but thank you for all that you do, and it's always a pleasure.
It is, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you all for what you do and helping out. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Burnett and Beth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the first item, I'll, I'll jump on that one. The agricultural leases at this Summit View Business Park. As you know, since we purchased the properties that make up the Summit View Business Park, we have had leases with farmers that would keep the property up in, in good maintained areas and good-looking for prospects and visitors. After the first five years, which we were contractually obligated to use the, the existing farmers, last year we bid out those, those leases and went to Mr. Don Sync, who had been doing it before, and then Hayes Farms is the other one that, that came in and took over the Fike Farm, the former Fike Farm. This year, we've got a project on the books. Normally what we'll do is take out any property that we think we're going to use in that given calendar year so that we don't end up messing up their, their harvest and their crops. So this year, we've got the Dogwood grading, Dogwood site grading on the books, and so what we looked at was taking out that property from the, from the farm leases. That affects Don Sync very little. We have, and I should say, we have a right of, a right of lease to them on an annual basis for the first four years. Don Sync, his property to be farmed would be impacted very little, we're talking just a few acres. However, on the Kaye's Farm lease, which is mainly the Fike Farm, the former Fike Farm, most of that property that has historically been farmed with Dogwood site grading would now be out. It would be graded this year. So it would drop what Kaye's Farms could do from twenty-four acres down to about four acres, which makes it not economically viable for them to do that. Knowing that we have a couple of months until the grading would start, is they have asked if they could go ahead and utilize the farm area that, as it is, from now till mid-May, and that would allow them to do a cutting on the property and get some of their, their fertilizer and other expenses that they've put into the park, get some of that back. So what we're doing is just presenting to you all, if you so agree, to do a extension of the Don Sync Farm lease at Summit View through December thirty-first, and with the Kaye's Farms farm lease to go through May thirty-one of this year at no cost to, to Kaye's Farms. So I'll be glad to answer any questions that the board may have.
I have a question.
Okay.
I've asked this question before, and it's probably a stupid one, but I'm gonna ask it anyways. How much would it cost the county if we would have to mow and maintain what Mr. Sync is having to pay the county?
There, if we had to do it on our own with, with staff, we would hire at least one additional person.
So...
We're talking about a hundred and fifty acres or so total?
How did we go about, is it like a sealed bid type scenario? Is that how it's done?
Last year?
So is that how it's awarded?
Yeah, what we did last year was, we did sealed bids, and it was a one-year lease that could be renewed for up to three additional one-year leases. So this would be the first renewal of those bid, sealed bids that we did last year.
All right, I'll just leave it with a comment. I think Mr. Sync's doing the county a huge favor, and I'll stop there. But, yeah, I guess the whole one dollar is just because we have to lease it for something?
For something, yeah.
All right, understood.
Anyone else?
How often do you guys take up those bids? Is that a five-year contract or year-by-year?
Yeah, so what we've done this past year was the first year that we actually had to do the bid, the sealed bids, and that was a one-year with three one-year renewals. So we've got up to four years in that, but we could, if we decided, if the board decided, you know what, we don't like the way that this is being farmed, or we want to see something totally different done, you guys could come back out and do it. Instead of renewing the lease, you could just go ahead and go back out to another lease, another sealed bid.
Mr. Condon?
Is it better to do a year-by-year lease in case we have to change the land? So it'd be, that'd be the best reason, if I spend a year-by-year instead of giving us, you know, three or four-year lease on it?
Yeah, and the reason that we do that, two, two reasons. One is if we have a good farmer in there, that we want to make sure that, that they get to come back time and again to make sure they take care of the land the way that, that Don Sync does and, and Kaye's Farms and Seth Jameson before that. So we do have that, and then also the fact that we do hope and expect there will be new businesses coming in and new sites that are graded and things like that, so you're going to end up radically changing the, the leases over time.
So basically keeps over a lawsuit?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, you need, you need action on this?
If, if, if the board so chooses.
Okay. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion to authorize the extension of the Don Sync Farm lease at the Summit View Business Park through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and authorize the county administrator and county attorney to execute such documents as necessary. I also make a motion to approve the amended lease extension with Kaye's Farms for the Summit View Business Park through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and authorize the county administrator and county attorney to execute such documents as necessary.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Please make sure, before anything's done out there, that you get with Kaye Farms, make sure that they've been able to harvest what they need to harvest.
We will.
So if it's like a couple of days into June, and they need a couple more days, I would expect county staff to give our farmer those few days that they need to get their harvest there.
Yes, sir.
Right? Do we need to put that in the motion? Are we good? We got an understanding?
I think we, I think we've got an understanding.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion before we take a final vote? All right, all in favor? Let me know I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The record shows there were none opposed. Okay, and Beth?
So we have another update to the Dogwood Site grading project that we started, I think this all kind of started in summer of two thousand and twenty-one. So now we're coming to you today to request approval for bidding out the grading project of the Dogwood Site. I kind of hit the high notes, that was included in your executive summary. Like I said, I was instructed in the summer of twenty-one to pursue a grant application with Virginia Business Ready Site Programs for grading of the Dogwood Site. We applied for the original, what we assumed it would be about five to six million dollars, so we applied for that. We were awarded a million dollars then, and then awarded a million and a half in the spring of twenty-two. We applied for additional grant funding this past year, and were not awarded that grant funding. And so as soon as we found out we weren't awarded that grant funding, I called our amazing engineers and asked them to present plans for us that would work within the budget of those awarded grant funds. So they have presented plans for us to do grading that would, you know, for about two point five million, which is what we have state grant funds from. So we'll, you know, hopefully if, if y'all approve this, we'll put it out to bid, and then hopefully come back to y'all in May to award the contract, and then, you know, they would start construction in, in June. And then the, you know, the goal is to have it wrapped up by the end of the year. And so this would, if you've been out to the Dogwood Site recently, what this will accomplish is pretty much everything past the Parks and Rec facilities will, will be graded. And so when we have prospects out, number one, this should move us up a tier certification through Virginia Economic Development Partnership. And number two, when we have prospects out, they'll be able to see the potential of where their, their building would lay, as opposed to now, it's not, it's kind of hard to visualize. Any questions about anything?
Go ahead.
So, first of all, potential prospects?
Mm-hmm.
Had a few recently. I mean, how are we looking? I mean, we still got people coming out there?
We haven't had a, a visit on the Dogwood Site since, we had a, a visit on the Dogwood Site in June, I think.
So if, if I'm asked right, we were awarded two and a half, we're short two and a half. So we need a five million to grade it correctly.
Well, to grade, to grade it like completely fully, to make it, you know, a hundred and eighteen acre site. What this does is it gets us, you know, for about halfway there.
About halfway there. Part of me wants to think that that would have a negative look for potential prospects, that we only graded half?
No, it, because, because really, the purpose of, of us grading is to shorten the time to market. It's not really the, it's just, you know, when they show up and they see that there are going to have to be a lot of grading work done, then it's, in their mind, they know, okay, well, it's going to take a year before we can even start construction. If they show up and they see that it's mostly, and like I said, this will be, I mean, once you turn the, the corner at where the, like, all the, the Parks and Rec facilities are, everything from back there will be pretty much flat after this. So I think they'll be able to see that, and I mean, and, and the time, you know, if we do get a prospect that needs that whole site, I mean, we can, what little bit of work is left to be done, we can do very quickly, once we get this work done.
So, yeah, just to confirm, you're only asking to spend the grant money that we have, no county funds?
No, we don't anticipate any county funds. I did get the balance of, of the Summit View account just in case bids come back, say at two point six million instead of two point five million. But we can, you know, we can kind of maybe cover that when the contracts come back. We're hoping they'll come back under that two point five million.
I think it's important that you guys know how I feel. Once I see more going in there.
I know.
I'm gonna be more, it'll be a lot easier for me to vote to spend more money on the business park.
And I promise I'm trying.
Oh, I know you are. Trust me, I know you are. I know you're a go-go. I've known you my whole life, and I'm not saying that, but what I'm saying is, is when that comes, I'm gonna be hesitant to want to spend money until I see the more prospects and get some more sites confirmed that we've got people coming in, because, you know, and I think with the big one coming, I think that will alleviate some of my anxiety. I know, and you just went to California to talk to them. I've been waiting for an update on that, to see how that went, and, you know, kind of get an update on potential prospects and stuff like that. So I'm really, really gun-shy to spend money on the business park when, you know, we still only have the two out there. And I just, I know you know how I feel, but I just want to get it out there. So like, the two point five, that is all I'm comfortable with voting on, since that was grant money. To put more local tax dollars in, at this point, I can't support that until we get some more. until we get some more prospects out there and get some stuff going. And there's nobody up here that believes that you're not giving it 100%. I can promise you that. So I appreciate all your gusto and really trying to get in there and get some prospects. But I do want to hear how California went. I hadn't had a chance to corner you and talk to you about it, so.
Yeah, it was, well, I mean, it was, it was a great visit. Traditional Medicinals will be here the first week of April. We've set up meetings with our development team for them to talk through the process of, you know, presenting plans and permits and all that stuff. I know that they've got some meetings set up with, you know, private companies while they're here. They'll be here about four days, so, yeah.
Do they actually have plans for their buildings already?
I think they're in, I think that's why they're meeting with all the, like the, I mean, engineers and contractors and stuff. They want to use as local as possible.
Okay, cool. Thanks, Beth.
Thanks. Beth?
Yes.
Thank you for all your work on this. Very much appreciate it. Just a question, maybe two questions. Is the RFP gonna tightly scope within this budgeted amount?
Yes.
So that we, I mean, you know, the bidding responses are gonna be, they need to be, you know, responsive to the ass, to the RFP. So care's being given to managing that scope. Is that correct?
Yes, ECI did a great job. Like I said, the day I found out we weren't getting the additional, I called them and they did some research with contractors to say, you know, how much can we get done with $2.5 million? And so they've done a great deal of research and presented plans that we're pretty confident will fit within that budget.
And let me ask you one more question, and this probably isn't a fair question. You're an expert in this stuff. If we, you know, work the $2.5 million out and we get that amount of grading done, would you be in a position to be confident that that site would be attractive to prospective businesses without a completed grading project ensued after that?
I mean, I think it would be more favorable with the additional grading we're doing. You know, I think, I think once we get the additional grading done, then it's probably a good idea to kind of just take a step back and look and see when, for the next round of VBRSP or the next, whatever grant fund comes down the pipe next. You know, do we want to apply for more grant funding or do we need to apply for infrastructure funding in the north region of the park? So I think for that question, I don't have a great answer, to be honest. I would say let's just reevaluate that once we see what the site looks like.
Thank you. And I, Mr. Chairman, much like Mr. Mitchell, I would, my opinion is gonna be get through the bids, review the bids, let them make a recommendation from that process. But anything that falls out on the other side of that in terms of additional funding needed, willing to hear what that request looks like. But moving forward, I would very much encourage this board to lean on grant funding if we're looking at another $2.5. That's a big price tag for a business park that we're not getting a good yield on at all. There's no return on investment from that business park to date. And I'm really hoping that the Dogwood Site goes and goes well because that'll be a major, major coup for Franklin County. But that's, I just want to get on the record for where I sit on that, Mr. Chairman.
Mike, has the core samples been done? Do we know if there's rock where the Dogwood Site is gonna be like we hit when they were doing the...
We asked that very question. Yes, there's been geotechnical done and it looks like that we're gonna be grading all above where the rock would be. Right now, the plan is to go ahead and do a lump sum bid on that so there wouldn't necessarily be a rock clause. It'll be just a lump sum. So we look like we'll be okay. I'm sorry.
Explain that to me, please.
Yeah, Bobby.
Yeah, because I mean, I understand what a rock clause is, but like, what do you mean a lump sum? I don't, I don't know what you're talking about.
And I just caught him in the hallway when he was dropping off plans. So he says, gee, thanks. He wasn't necessarily prepared for this.
I apologize for the blue jeans and polo shirt, but my name is Bobby Womp. I'm the President of Engineering Concepts. So as they've shared, we learned that you didn't get the additional funding. The $2.5 million was kind of a hard cap number we're looking at. But specifically to the rock, we have a geotechnical study on the site. I think there were maybe 12 borings across the site that analyzed the depth of the rock. As we looked at that compared to the grades that we would be grading down to, all of our finished grades would be above that rock level. So when you go out to bid, it's risk. So either the county's gonna take the risk or the contractor's gonna take the risk. So by bidding the project unclassified, what that means is the contractor is responsible for establishing the finished grade elevations regardless of what they hit. So the risk is now no longer on the county. The risk is now on the contractor. So sometimes the negative of that is the contractors are scared and they're gonna inflate their bids. So how that's mitigated is through the geotech report. So when we have borings across the site that all indicate rock is below any finished grade, they're not as concerned about hitting rock, therefore you don't see those inflated numbers. So now they are in a competitive mode of how scared are we gonna be? Do we want to risk losing this project when we really don't think there's much risk for rock? And it typically generates a better bid for the county. And then you know what your, your, your cost is.
So here's a follow-up comment. So most of the grading that's been done out there has been done by local contractors. If this county were to stand by and let one of our local and ones that have been doing it, our big businesses in this county, to let them take on that risk and then ultimately maybe put one of them out of business, I would be absolutely furious. So if the better way to go about it is to have a rock clause, then I think we should consider that because to put one of our local businesses at risk, you know, like the one that's done a lot of work out there, I mean, they've probably got 20, 25 employees. You know, that's 25 jobs lost if they go out of business because they hit a lot of rock. That's not, I mean, I, you know, to, I mean, we're leaning on you guys because, I mean, I don't bid on stuff like this. I mean, it's way out of my realms. That's why I'm asking questions. But to, to have the risk of putting somebody out of business, that infuriates me. I don't want that at all. So if we gotta go about it with a rock clause, then maybe that's the better way. I'm just, just my two cents.
And I will share, so this is not, bidding a project unclassified is not, it's a fairly standard practice to do that. You know, you either bid it classified or unclassified. One, the local contractor is one of the ones that I did talk with about, you know, looking at the budget. So if there is a lot of concern from contractors, we will have a pre-bid meeting, at which point they will share their concerns. So if we, and we discussed this this week, if we get a lot of feedback from the contractors that they aren't easy, that they, they're a little uneasy with bidding it unclassified, then, then we probably would come back with a recommendation to go classified, i.e. they would get paid based on what's removed. It does add a layer of complexity when you do that. Now you have to measure the rock, determine what's, what's there. You have to estimate enough rock so that when they bid on that, it will affect their project because you don't want someone to put in a low bid but then have a higher rock clause number that if you hit rock, you're really gonna, you know, maybe they're no longer the low bidder. So there's a little bit of a management of that as well. So what we discussed is I recommended to the, to Mike and Beth, that we go unclassified and let's see how the pre-bid meeting goes and if we need to reanalyze it at that point. The other thing is contractors will often say, can we go on site and do our own borings to minimize our risk? That's very typical. I would say projects this size, probably 100% of the time, I get asked that question for contractors to go do that. So I would expect, again, they would have multiple opportunities to avoid that if they had a...
What would it cost for them to do their own, their own bore samples?
That's a good question. That's gonna be what equipment they have nearby? Do they have to haul it? I probably couldn't, you're probably talking about a day's worth of labor to bring a, bring a drill rig on site, maybe a two-man crew to go pop some holes where they felt they were at risk.
So if I may, what percentage of contingency are you guys gonna build in on this grading piece?
Yeah, so again, we, we've let the contractors know that we have a $2.5 million budget. There are provisions in the bidding documents. So let's say the lowest bid is $2.6 million and you don't want to spend more than the grant allows. There are provisions in the contract that will have been reviewed by the county attorney that allow you to negotiate. So I think it's very natural in the way we've reduced the footprint. Basically, we're not going to remove the knoll where the park facilities are. So if we just had to scale back the grading a little bit more to bring the number down to $2.5, you would have the flexibility and with the low bidder to, to work within your budget limits.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for the pull-in.
Sorry for the blue jeans.
Anyone else have any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Cundy.
The $2.5, if good luck, that'd be enough money to do that Dogwood Site?
It'll be enough to get us about a 28-acre pad out there.
Get it ready.
Yeah.
Okay, but that's grant money, correct?
Yes.
Okay. What, once you build a business park, and I've heard this figure before, what is the average time it takes for a business park to take hold? In other words, people recognize it, see it, start filling it up?
I'm gonna have to defer to the developer on that one.
I can tell you what I was told, but anyway, I want to listen to what you guys say.
I was just gonna say, there's not really a specific time. I mean, you look at something like Commonwealth Crossing, just, just south of us. They've been filling up, you know, a lot of sites in a relatively short amount of time. When you look at Greenfield, which is doing fantastically, it's been around for 20 years before it really started hitting.
That was the figure I was banking on was it takes 20 years to get something going.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think it's important that we continue forward with that so we can bring people in. Because I think the state of Virginia is, it's, I can't remember how many parks have a Hurle Lake platform. You know the answer to that? It's very, it's very few. It's only about, what, four?
And it's changing every day. I mean, at the same time we're doing this, so is everybody else.
Anyway, thank you. I appreciate it.
Go ahead, Mr. Carr.
Thank you. I just have a comment. I want to say hi to Bobby. I haven't seen him in a long time. He was my next-door neighbor, a little bit younger than I am, and I'm ready to offer a motion.
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
Okay, I make a motion to approve moving forward with the bidding of additional grading at the Dogwood Site at Summit View Business Park.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion before we take a final vote? Seeing none, all in favor? Maybe none were saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? The record shows none opposed.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
And thank you, Bobby. Good seeing you. Tell your mom I said hello.
Mike, thank you as well.
Thank you, Mike. Come on up, Kevin.
Kevin is always smiling. He is such a happy guy. I love it.
See, I find out he's kin to me. No wonder.
And he is not kin to you.
Yes, he is too.
Oh, my lord, there are Kandalls everywhere.
Next time a union, he gonna be there.
Chairman and members of the board, we're here today to talk about Phase One of the Tourism ARPA Project and hopefully able to award that contract today. Just a quick refresher for the Tourism ARPA Project. We were awarded $120,000 as part of Virginia Tourism and their Tourism ARPA Dollars. They had stringent guidelines on what we could and could not use those funds for. So before this board, a couple of months ago, we presented a four-phase plan that this board did agree for submittal. We submitted that plan. We were given the approval to go ahead with that spending plan. And now, last month or the month before, we came before the board and requested to go out for RFP for this phase number one. And of that $120,000 that we were given by the state of Virginia, we've already received the first half of that, so the $60,000 is already sitting in the tourism grants line item inside of the tourism budget. In Phase One, we had budgeted at $55,000. And then, per the board's direction, as I said, the Tourism and Marketing Department issued an RFP regarding Phase One on February the 5th. The RFP was published in the Roanoke Times on the 5th of February and then again on roanoke.com from the 5th of February through the 14th of February, as well as the bid postings page on the county website. That was, the proposals for the procurement were due on March the 2nd of 2023 and the county received four proposals. They included proposals from Eddie Alexander, the International Development Institute, Research America Incorporated, and Zartico. Then staff looked at those four proposals. We chose what in our opinion was the top two proposal options. We then invited those two companies to come in for an in-person interview, which case then those two firms were Eddie Alexander and the International Development Institute. And of those two, following the interview and the scoring that was outlined in the RFP, the top contender was chosen as Eddie Alexander. And I think that Ms. Torres has this, the proposal that she's gonna kind of pass out to you. We were happy to say that after we contacted Eddie Alexander, that they were our top prospect in this. We then kind of entered into a negotiation process regarding the scope of the work as well as the cost. And we were happy to say that we were able to negotiate a price of $55,000 for the scope of work so that it fell right on budget with what we had planned for. So we were happy with that. Kind of taking a look at what Eddie Alexander is proposing to do. Couple of things. They're gonna start off with a project kickoff. Then they will be able to provide us with a written research report, which is gonna include a lot of key data that we're needing in the Tourism Department, including a situational overview, inventory of our top assets, visitor demographic overview that includes age ranges, ethnic diversity, and average household income, as well as the location of the top feeder markets that are coming and visiting Franklin County. Also includes the average length of stay, and this was very important, that includes overnight visitors but as well as day trippers who are coming and spending longer than four hours inside of Franklin County. So this study won't show us, if you're coming, traveling through Franklin County, you stop and get gas and you continue through. So if you stay with at least four hours. We're gonna be able to look at 10 different points of interest around the county and that will give us a more detailed look of very specific locations. And we'll have input as staff on what those 10 locations that we want to look at would be. And the last part, they would have recommendations for future promotional offerings and efforts, as well as our brand positioning. And they've also agreed to provide at least three presentations to stakeholders. One, of course, could be our Board of Supervisors, but also to some of our tourism-related businesses around the county. And again, up to three of those. Again, the fee would be the $55,000, which again is within budget. And we do already have the $60,000 already in hand, sitting in that line item. We would look to kick the project off if we could get the contract executed in time sometime around the end of March. They would look to then purchase that data that would be interpreted around April the 1st. Initial analysis will be completed by July the 1st and we should have the final report in hand by July the 30th of this year that we could then use to move into the second, third, and fourth phases of our ARPA project. But I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding this.
Okay, anyone have any questions?
I just have a statement if I may, Mr. Chairman. Kevin, this is great. I like this kind of analyses because it's gonna be very instructive to how we map out and plan how we're going to position Franklin County from a marketing and branding perspective. And we have so many assets that this board has, has talked about and we've, we've just, we enjoy a lot of natural assets and so forth. So I am very supportive of this type of work and what it's going to yield for you and Beth and Amy and Mike as we move forward. It's data, it's gonna be instructive, and we can work in a measured fashion about where we, where the assets are, at what volumes, so that we can be in the right place in terms of how we're spending our money.
Anyone else have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, please.
Okay, go ahead.
I make a motion to authorize execution of contracts for the completion of Phase One of the Tourism RPA Project Regarding Tourism of Visitor Research and Analysis and authorize the county administrator and county attorney to execute the contract on the county's behalf.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract. Any further discussion before we take a vote?
Mr. Chairman, I've never seen the contract.
Oh, okay.
Maybe we ought to say review and approve by the county attorney if it'd be okay.
Okay, we need to change the wording to review and approve. Madam Clerk, do you have that?
Can you, can you please repeat that?
Just add where Mr. Kandoff said review for the county attorney and the county administrator to execute it, but to review and execute it. but to review and execute it.
Yeah, just add those words, to review and execute. Right, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause if we see something that we, you know, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna have to.
Okay. So we all clear on that now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, everyone clear, that's what you're voting on. Madam Clerk, take a roll call, please.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yep.
Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Mike Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tommy Cundiff?
Yes.
Supervisor Thompson is absent for the vote. Chairman Tatum?
Yes.
Chairman Tatum, I've been asked, being mindful of time, to give a quick update on our agricultural fair, some of the, the challenges that we're facing. Wanted to give the update being that we, we had brought at the budget work session the difficulties that we were having acquiring a midway. Those difficulties are continuing. We have been informed that Brinkley Entertainment, who has provided our midway in the past, will not be doing any midways in the month of September. So with that being said, they did offer a couple of suggestions, one of which would be attempting to move the fair to the month of August, which does move it very close to the beginning of school, and a couple of other issues have arisen with that, including the parks already being booked with large family reunions and things of the such. But I, I do kind of wanna give the board an update, we did reach out to a couple of other midways. We reached out to three other midways. One is already booked for 2023. Two of the larger midways that we did reach out to, one had no response at all. So I have no explanation for that one. The third one, which is a very large amusement company, said that the space constraints, as well as the ticket prices and attendance numbers and their travel throughout the region wouldn't be economical on their side. I will say that we've had two fair committee meetings to discuss this. The recommendation of the, of the fair committee, they're, they're relining that if we do have a fair, kind of our only option would be move it to the month of August. But standing here today, I cannot guarantee that, that we would have a midway in the month of August. So I did wanna let the board know that we are on a tight time schedule because we are having to book other things other than the midway, but looking for some guidance from the board on what direction you would like for us to pursue. With the three main options being moving it to, attempting to move it to August with no guarantee of a midway, having it in September with no midway, maybe changing up the dynamic of what it is, maybe changing it to a festival. Or the third option, of course, would be postponement of this year's fair, which, again, we leave it up to the board's decision on what, what direction they would like for staff.
Oh, excuse me. I have something to say. Kevin, I am not surprised to hear the difficulties you're having. I've heard this and other things that I do. It is almost April. What is the drop dead deadline that you would have to work towards for vendors, for food trucks? If you were able, it doesn't sound like a midway is gonna happen, it's like, you know, as early as August. So are we at that threshold for making a decision?
We are definitely very close to it, if we're not already there. Things like food vendors definitely have a much later timetable. But when you start looking at your, at your larger things, such as if we decide to have the music stage, having tho, that, those facilities prepared. A lot of the, the top-tier talent is already booked out for those dates, as far as stage management goes. When you start looking at other attractions, I know that we've had the petting zoo folks year in and year out. He is chomping at the bit to, to get a date because he, he's trying to hold it for us. But we've also are putting him in a tough position when we can't give him a concrete date or a concrete answer. And also, some of the larger attractions, when you look at last year, we had the racing pigs and we had the timber show. The number of options that we're having are kind of dwindling by the week. We saw a little bit of a slowdown with that, on what options that we would have, so.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would make a recommendation to the board for consideration. I think if we're, I think the Ag Fair is very important to the fabric of Franklin County, and this board's been hugely supportive of the Ag Fair. And with the constraints that you're up against, Kevin, I would rather us hit the pause button, take this coming year to plan it, plan it well, make sure it's resourced well, that we get on calendars for midways in a timely manner. Because throwing this stuff together and putting that kind of pressure on our staff and, and not really knowing what we're gonna end up with, even with the midway. To me, there are so many variables. If we do a fair this year and it's not done well, I don't think that's gonna leave a good mark on the county. I would rather see us hit the pause button, really do a lot of planning for next year, and come in with an effort that, that we can all be so very proud of, and it also gives a lot of room for discussion with the board. Maybe we want to evolve this in a different location to do other things. You know, maybe we can look at getting sponsors. I mean, there's a whole host of things that I think if we took the time to really think through it and work with Kevin and the committee, and, you know, help provide input, I think it could be a win-win for everybody involved. I feel bad for you, Kevin. I, I feel really bad for you that you're up against this kind of, and I, and I understand that the midway that we had last year, that there was a death of, was it the owner or the operator?
That's where it's coming from. Mr. Brinkley did pass away unexpectedly in November, which has led to the, the changes in the company.
Yeah, so, I mean, you're up against odds that you've had no control over, and I don't wanna see us do an event that's not done well. So I would make that recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
Just to weigh in a little bit, I hear what Ms. Smith's saying, but at the same time, you're saying there is a possibility of August for the same midway.
There, just to kind of give you an update on the timetable, I provided an outreach email to, to the Brinkley Entertainment, expressing our interest on January the 9th, looking to get the, the ball rolling. We were informed on January the 12th of the passing of Bob Brinkley, which again, he passed away in November. We then returned that we are, our condolences, that we're, would still like to pursue the option of, of having Brinkley Entertainment. That email was on January the 24th. February the 9th, having not heard a response, we reached back out for an update. We then got a response of no September fairs in, on February the 17th. And then we had the fair committee meeting on the 9th of March to kind of go over this. And then again, on March 9th, we requested if the possibility of the third week in August would be an option. And since March the 9th, we have not had any contact from Brinkley Entertainment.
So what do you know if August is an option?
Correct. It, it was indicated that they had the second and third week of August available. However, we, we have not heard anything since, the last indication was February 17th that we heard anything from them.
What would be wrong with pushing it back to like the first weekend of October?
As far, and we could move the dates with getting a midway.
Yeah, that was my next question, is what about October? I mean, most time, first half of November is pretty mild, so I mean, you know, we can, could even consider November. As far as I'm concerned, that gives you more time to plan, which kind of goes with what Ms. Smith's saying, more time to plan, but. All I'll have to say is I'd really like to see the fair happen. I know the troubles you're having, and I think it is, you know, more stress on you, and I don't like that, but I think you can pull it off too, cause I know you're a go-getter, so. Yeah, I mean, I don't think we have to have it in September. So I would almost go out on a limb, my other supervisors might smack me when we take break here and be like, do what you need to do. You know, just whenever it can happen, make it happen. I mean, it's, you know, it's ultimately your baby, so. I got confidence in you to say, yay, man, just make it happen. So, find one. If one of the bigger ones, that probably means they need more money too, right?
They can't make their numbers work, Ronnie. But the, the price that is charged for admission, the larger midways, correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, they, they can't make their numbers work.
That was, that was a big concern from one of the, the larger midways that we have. They requested attendance numbers, ticket price, and then the amount of space that they would have, which we know that, that flatland is, is at a premium there on the location. If you're looking at October, you have to be mindful of things like the Folk Life Festival and things like that. But, again, I, we, we're just kind of looking for some sort of guidance on what direction we're gonna pursue and, and dedicate staff's time to when it comes to the fair.
Anyone else?
Well, frankly, you know, I think the county needs this fair. You know, we got shut down during COVID, all this stuff, people just praise it, praise it every year it's open. So I would like to see some way to come to a understanding we can have it this year, whether it's in August or October. You know, I, I think the county people need it, deserve it, and we need to show off our agriculture, and that's mainly what it's for, and I really appreciate it, and I know the farmers want it, so.
Go ahead, Mr. Carr.
I, I don't wanna heap on it, and I'm just throwing this out there. Maybe we could, if we can't get a midway, mix a horse show in with the Ag Fair and some sort of a music festival venue, just as a suggestion, Kevin. But if you don't think that's gonna work and we don't have enough staff and so forth, I'm not saying do that. I'm just trying to salvage the fair. And I will tell you, the, the Ag Committee is very interested in working with you and, and having things at the fair.
And that has been a suggestion that has come up in, in the, the committee meetings. Pretty much, if you, if you take the midway out of it, it's no longer a fair.
That's right.
But that doesn't mean that you couldn't have an agricultural festival. You, you have Antique Farm Days, which highlights the historical aspect of farming. So this could be kind of the bookend at the end of the year that highlights, you know, the, the modern-day producers that we have. That's, that's definitely an idea that's been kicked around. I think we would have to, if we decided to go that route with proceeding with a festival instead of a fair without a midway, putting forth some marketing dollars to make sure that the community was aware this, of, of what the event is.
Is the midway the big moneymaker, the big draw, you think?
The midway, I don't have it right in front of me, but roughly $10,000 is what the profit of the midway. When you look at the ride wristbands that were sold versus the cost of the midway, last year was about a $10,000 profit on that front. But we also received about a $9,000 refund because they were not able to provide the Ferris wheel. So i- if they provided a Ferris wheel, you would have been looking at more of a $1,000 windfall.
I'm just thinking out loud here too, an antique, like a flea market, a one-day flea market like they have up the valley at, what's that place, Green Valley? A one-day or a couple-day flea market, a horse show. I'm just trying to compensate if, if it's workable.
And I think, if I understand, it's more of an agricultural festival as opposed to the fair. So proceeding in a very similar direction, having, cause outside of the midway, I think we could get many of the same attractions that, that we've had in the past. Again, it's, it's whatever the board.
Well, Kevin, if the area is a constraint and the ticket price, why couldn't we move it across the road where the county owns land? And then just up your ticket, I wouldn't mind paying however much more, my kids loved it, I'd pay it. And if you had it beside the road, everybody riding by could see it. You could park on the left side, you could have a fair on the right. You wouldn't even have to have, you wouldn't have to cross 619. You could quit renting all those lights, that would save you money. And, and if it was on the side of the road where everybody saw it, they'd talk about it more, maybe more people would come.
Yeah, that has definitely been an idea that's been thrown out there because it, it is a little bit flatter there, especially when you look at the field to the, the right of the, the home that sits there. As you said, that, that's definitely, everything is on the table at this point.
I'd hate to not see it happen.
Right.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may, Kevin, just hearing the discussion back and forth, it, it sounds like really the question is, you know, whether the midway or a midway is gonna be available, whether it's, you know, August, it sounds like September's not available, possibly October, although don't wanna compete with Blue Ridge Folk Life, but then possibly even early November. That being said, and I know you, I think you said that you had reached out to Brinkley specifically, and, and certainly they've been a really good vendor in years past. I think our communities really appreciated Brinkley Entertainment. It is unfortunate the passing of, I guess, Mr. Brinkley. You know, that being said, I know this board will meet again Tuesday week. We have a budget public hearing that, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm just curious, you know, every attempt that can be made, I guess, if, you know, just looking at the board to, to Ms. Smith's point about, you know, we're up against April and staff's perspective, that, you know, it's a lot to pull together. Maybe we would know something, say, a week from now. Every effort that we can make to identify a midway, whether it's Brinkley or another, if I'm hearing, on some dates, and then maybe the board, this could give the board some, you know, information next Tuesday. But in the meantime, certainly Kevin, you and staff, and maybe some of the Ag Committee members or the Ag Fair Committee members, rather to, to Mr. Mike Carter's point, you know, i- is there an alternate Plan B or, or something, if in case there, there is no midway? Certainly, I hope it's not the case. Everyone loves the funnel cakes and, and certainly the Ferris wheel, but in, in, you know, if that is not absolutely possible, you know, i- is there a Plan B? That, I don't know if that helps the board, maybe, and helps you as staff this week to put every effort we can, and then Tuesday week, maybe bring that back to the board, I just offer that, Mr. Chairman.
I'd just like to add, we've got a lot of work to do. I've got a lot of faith in you, as this board does. I would hate to see us lose an opportunity to celebrate our agricultural heritage. And I think that's kind of reflective of, of all of us, whether we have a midway or not. So just do the best you can and, and let us know what, what support you need from this board.
Maybe a Dunkin' booth for the supervisor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. That'd probably offset that $10,000.
So next Tuesday, Chris? An update next Tuesday?
If that's what I'm hearing, consensus with the board, we'll bring back information next Tuesday, following the public hearing.
All right, I'm showing we have a break and reconvene in B75 for a short budget work session so that we can try to get back on schedule. So we'll reconvene at B75.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am making a motion to certify that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session to which the certification applies. And only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which this closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which the certification applies.
Do we have a second?
Sure.
Okay. Madam Clerk, we take a roll call, please.
Supervisor Mike Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tommy Cundiff?
Yes.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Thompson is absent for the vote. Chairman Tatum?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we have a public hearing tonight regarding the transfer of property to 335 Franklin Street LLC, which is owned by Mr. Philip Bain. Mr. Bain has been working for a while on multiple business locations there in downtown Rocky Mount. During their work, they found that the county owned approximately 250 square feet of property and has asked that the county turn that property over to Mr. Bain. And so, that property being a, a help to his economic development initiatives and not being useful, useful for the county, we have, as staff, have recommended that transfer. So what we need to do tonight is to hear public comment related to that proposed transaction.
Madam Clerk, do you have anyone signed up to speak on that?
No, Chairman, I have no.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Burnett about this? Okay, I guess officially we need to open the floor for public comment, in case anyone's here would like to speak in regard to this land transfer. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the floor for public comment. Okay, board members, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion to authorize the sale of the aforementioned property to 335 Franklin Street LLC and authorize the county administrator and county attorney to execute such documents as necessary.
Second.
Second. Madam Clerk, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Lori- Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Mike Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tommy Cundiff?
Yes.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Thompson is absent for the vote. Chairman Tatum?
Yes.
Okay, Lisa Cooper.
Thank you, Chairman Tatum and members of the board. We're here to hear a special use permit with possible conditions on .72 acres. The property is currently zoned A1 Agricultural. It's located at 1970 Moorewood Road, which is in the Gills Creek Election District, and it's identified further as tax map number 0150600300. The purpose of this special use permit is for a short-term rental dwelling. Basically, some background about the structure. The dwelling is a one-and-a-half-story single family. It was built in 1999. It consists of four bedrooms, three baths, one half-bath, a total living area of approximately 3,900 square feet. Real estate records show the single family is having three bedrooms instead of four. The sewage disposable system operational permit that was in your packet of information dated back March 1, 1999, shows it as a three-bedroom. In order for this short-term rental, if approved by you as the board, to be used as four bedrooms, that septic system will have to be upgraded with the Virginia Department of Health. The applicant currently does not reside in this dwelling. The property owners do own and operate one short-term rental on Airbnb in Manita, and this would be their second. Nearby parcels or other single families, wooded or vacant lots, and a commercial enterprise at the end of the road. Nearby zoning districts are A1 Agricultural, R1 Residential, Suburban, and B2 General Business. You also, it's needed to be noted that this property is located on a state-maintained road. The property does a butt Smith Mountain Lake to the rear, and it does have a dock. There are off-site dwellings. There is an adjacent dwelling to the west that is about 65 feet. There is an adjacent dwelling approximately 270 feet across from Moorewood Road, and if you've been out to the site, there is a new single family being constructed next door. There were three citizen comments at the Planning Commission public hearing. Three of the citizens were in favor of the applicant's special use permit for a short-term rental. They were, they were actually approached by the property owner, and the property owner explained what type of business they would be, the short-term rental business that they would be operating, explained how they operated. You will also notice in your packet, they have detailed, gave you some guidelines that they've used at other short-term rentals for you to see how they operate their short-term rental. We also had four citizens at the public hearing that spoke against the application. Several of them lived across the cove. They were concerned about boaters not having experience in boating. They also were concerned how they can make, the boaters can make unsafe conditions. There was some concerns about children that swim in the cove and was afraid that the people that are renting might not understand boating laws and possibly could damage personal property. They also were concerned about noise and property values of the short-term rental. We also, between the public hearing of the Planning Commission and your public hearing, we did have one person call and just wanted to know the vote of the Planning Commission and wanted to know why the Planning Commission voted the way they did. We'd like to give you a vicinity map. As I said, it's located in the Gills Creek Election District. We also like to give you an aerial view of the property in blue. We also like to give you the, the comp plan, future land use, and as you can see, it's suburban residential, two units per acre. It also should be noted that this is located in the Westlake Designated Growth Area. We also like to give you a zoning map, and I discussed the zoning earlier. You can see the A1 property here. This is R1 property. This is the general business property, and then this up here is B1 that also has A1 property behind it. This is the concept plan submitted by the applicant. You will notice that they show privacy fence, they show a pond that's gonna be removed. They also show, the Board of Supervisors likes to see where the drain field is, where the well is, and where their septic tank is located. And I will note in your packet, they did submit their, the last time the septic was pumped out, and I think it was in September of 2022. This is another map that they submitted as part of their concept plan to show the distance between their dock and across the cove. Staff's analysis, with Smith Mountain Lake being a prime vacation destination, the proposed use would expand the temporary lodging options that our guests would have staying here in Franklin County. In addition to the extra lodging, the short-term rentals will continue to drive the tourism and economic value to the county. Keep in mind that the applicant is required to confirm with all the regulations in the county code with Section 25138 and Section 5.572. Given the staff recommendations, staff recommended to the Planning Commission that this short-term rental would not be substantial detriment to adjacent properties, change of character of the zoning district, and would still be in harmony with the purpose and the intent of the chapter. Planning Commission did hold their public hearing. The Planning Commission voted six in favor, one against, for the special use permit with five conditions. The first condition is the special use permit authorized for this property would be the only dwelling used as short-term rental. If another dwelling would be used, it would have to come back through the process. As I've stated before, the owners will have to comply to all the county codes, the two sections. The owners will have to supply a $1 million liability insurance policy. The owner shall be required to register the short-term rental, and she'll have to come in compliance, will have to have an inspection and be in compliance with that in order to operate the short-term rental. Also, prior to using the fourth bedroom, they would have to get approval from the Virginia Department of Health to upgrade their septic to four bedrooms. And I would be glad to answer any questions, and the petitioners are here also to present to you.
Okay. Anyone have any questions, Ms. Cooper? Okay. Seeing none, I'll open the floor for public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have someone signed up for that?
The applicant has signed up, Rachel Love.
Okay. State your name and address.
My name is Rachel Love. Our address is 1970 Moorewood, in Harty, Virginia. Good evening. I just want to first start off by saying thank you to the Franklin County staff members, particularly Lisa and Megan have been very helpful, and the commission who gave their time and your guys' time as well, so I really appreciate that. My husband and I are here tonight. We have been renting for about four years now. We did recently sell one of our properties in Lynchburg to purchase this property. As we stated in our previous meeting, we would like to eventually live on the lake. We've been enjoying the lake for almost 10 years now. We started as renters ourself. We used to rent every year with my brothers and sisters and my family. Many of our neighbors, and I think probably a lot of people on the lake have, our, I'm sorry, I should state, our neighbors at the house we're about to rent, they used to come up every year from North Carolina and rent as well, and they now live there. So you guys have had access to our packet, so you have a lot of information in there. We did have a recommendation letter from our neighbors who live full-time next to our other renter on the Bedford County side. She wrote a really nice review, which I greatly appreciate, but just stating that our primary goal is to make sure that we don't have a negative impact on our neighbors. That really is our primary purpose, and when we care about them, these are, even though we have two of them, these really are our homes. We put a lot of time and dedication into them, and it is our utmost importance to keep it in good conditions and that we have good renters who treat it respectfully. I guess that's probably all that I have. If you guys have any questions for me, I'll.
Anyone have any questions? See any?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else signed up to speak on this behalf?
No, Mr. Chairman, I have no additional speakers.
Okay, is there anyone present in the gallery that would like to speak on this regard? Seeing none, we'll close the floor to public comment. All right, board members, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a couple comments, given that this is in my district, if I may.
Sure.
I, first of all, thank you all for being, presenting such a well-informed packet and working with staff, and the information that you supplied that goes into your rentals, I think is excellent, and so thank you all for that. I went down and rode down there and pulled up in the drive over the weekend and walked around the property a little bit. I hope that was okay. I thought, somebody's gonna come and kick me off here. A couple concerns that I have, and I'm open to comments from the applicants if you see fit. I am concerned about the close proximity of the homes that are on both sides of this subject property. And as I rode down through there, you know, going down Moorewood Road, it is, you know, I know that there's mixed zoning down through there, and so I'm riding down through a lot of residentially oriented homes and so forth down Moorewood, pretty much saying to myself, you know, we're trying to look at a short-term rental with some concerns that I have, and then I get down to the end of the road where Indian Point Marina, you know, is where Copper Kettle used to be. I don't know if you all are aware of that. It looks to be fairly closed down with no occupancy down there at all. So I got to thinking about the business use that's very close to this subject property, making that a more amenable attribute to the application, that there is business potentially that could continue to go on down there. And I can, and also when I walk the property, the back is fairly steep going down to the dock. That wasn't a problem for me. My problem with, down at the cove area, is it's extremely tight down through there, and I think, you know, when we have short-term applicants come in and they, you know, I understand that the neighbors get concerned that live in adjacent lakefront properties. I get that. But, and so, I mean, we can't legislate lake activity, you know, very specifically, I should say. So, but this cove is very, very tight, and I worry about transient population, you know, people coming in and running and leaving and coming and leaving with boat activity in there with people that don't, you know, really know the area because it's so tight. And I understand why they use it as a swimming area. It really is that. So I am having trouble reconciling where I am on this because, as you all know, you know, I have long been, you know, a proponent of saying that short-term rentals is introducing business activity in our residential areas. Again, I was, you know, that didn't go too far for me once I saw Indian Point Marina very close to the home. So I struggle with that. The safety aspects of the location of the home with respect to where it is in the cove is concerning to me. The proximity to the homes on either side of this property is very close. So what we're doing is really introducing transient populations that are gonna come in and out with a short-term rental, as you would expect. I just don't like the proximity that exists there down in the cove as well as the two homes. So I really would like to hear feedback from my colleagues.
Anyone else have any comments?
Well, y'all are no help.
Sure.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Do I need to state my name again, or no?
We are, yeah.
All right. So I understand your concerns about the neighbors. So on the side of the established houses is Shannon Fair and Matt Strickland. They were ones that Shannon spoke in our behalf, so we've had lots of conversations with them over the year. We have constant communication with them. We're in a, like, text thread with them. We're constantly texting each other. They pick up packages for us if we need to and stuff. They're in full support.
Which side are they on? If you're looking at the house from the road?
They're on the right side.
They're on the right side? Okay.
Now, the other owners that are building there, we, they're moving up from North Carolina, and so they, we kind of have limited contact with them. We do have their number, and I have spoken with the woman who's building the place, and she showed no concerns. I did tell her that. I said, if you have any questions, please, so we have her contact information. I think she's primarily concerned right now because her construction is kind of behind right now and stuff like that. But, so she hasn't expressed any concern about it, but like we told all of the neighbors and our other neighbors that are directly across the street in the residential area, they also came and spoke on our behalf. So we've been very fortunate that all of our direct neighbors have been very understanding. They all have our contact information, you know, obviously, if anything comes up, we would want them to contact us right away.
So the ones that spoke against your application, are they your neighbors in the vicinity of the home?
No. So if you saw that image before that showed the dock that was 400 feet?
Yes.
It was them and them all the way on the point.
That's, okay, gotcha.
They're directly across from, like, the Westlake Inn.
Okay. Depending upon how this goes, this is something I should have been doing all along, and I'm interested to get your feedback on this. I serve on several boards. We try to take care of the lake.
Yes.
And I saw that you had some things in your materials about safety.
Yes.
And I downloaded something that I would like for, I don't know how to get this introduced with our applications, Lisa, but it's from the Department of Wildlife Resources, and it's boating regulations, and they're charted out, very easy to understand, but it goes into depth about, you know, things that general people coming to the lake may not be aware of, life jackets, the fact that, you know, I think one of the things is, I think a board is considered a vessel, things like that.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know if you would be interested in considering a packet like this since you're, you have a dock on your property.
Yeah, and we leave a lot of information at our other place, and as we will in this one, because we also leave life vests and stuff at the house because we, our biggest concern is that people come in with children and they, well, and anyone, honestly. Our rule is that anyone in the lake wears it because it doesn't matter how old you are. If you go underwater, you're not gonna be found, unfortunately.
Yeah.
So it really is our, is our primary concern. We don't want our rental, or somebody staying in our place to end in tragedy. So, yeah, we do normally provide them all that information. We usually point them to it, but I am more than happy, you know, we are constantly upgrading our stuff. We create these cheat sheets. One of our renters was concerned about the duck population and people feeding them bread, so we printed out a cheat sheet that tells them what's safe to feed the ducks and what's not, and those types of things, so that people can consider that while they're there. I will, the question about the cove, and I understand what you're saying, is deeper into the cove right there is really tight. We aren't allowing the renters to use our dock, our floating dock, or they're using our floating dock, but they're not using our lift. The lift is on the left side, which is in the more open side. So I guess our expectation is that we wouldn't expect people to go down there, but we do usually try to provide as much information to our guests on expectations, like not impacting our neighbors, those types of things. And we make very clearly, like, all of the guidance on noise and those, anything like that that's provided to say, these are the rules we expect you to follow. If you do not follow them, that can lead to the termination of your stay.
Okay. Thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything?
Yeah, my other question.
Okay.
You all planning on moving in this home when you retire? How far are you away from retiring, moving in, or what's your prospect for this home?
Yes. My fear is if it gets declined... My fear is if it gets declined, that I'm stuck with the option of selling it, or, unfortunately, we work and we live in Lynchburg right now. We, as far as how far away, we'd like it to be as soon as possible. That might depend on the market. My husband and I are engineers. We sometimes have capability of working from home. But, the long term is that, yes, we would like to retire on the lake, and I can see us retiring in this home. Right now, where we are, we've taken on a lot. We have two kids as well that are in school, and the second house is kind of a lot for us. And I think that's gonna be it for quite a while.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Carter, I see you.
I'm prepared to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I find that the use will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent properties. The character of the zoning district will not be changed thereby, and that such use will be in harmony with the uses permitted by right in the zoning district and with the public health, safety, and general welfare to the community. Therefore, I move to recommend approval of the applicant's request for special use permit to allow for the short-term tourist rental of a dwelling with the five conditions recommended by the staff report.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Madam Clerk, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Mike Carter?
Yes.
Ami Kundev?
Yes.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Thompson is absent for the vote. Chairman Tatum?
Yes. Okay, other matters by supervisors, and Maddie reminded me that I neglected to appoint Jim Galvin to complete Don Smith's unexpired term as an alternate member on the Western Virginia Regional Industrial Facility Authority. So, would somebody like to make that motion to appoint Jim to that position?
I will, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a second.
Tucker?
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, will you take a roll call or can a voice vote?
Voice vote is fine.
Okay. All in favor, let it be normal, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. There are none opposed. Tell Jim that's what he gets for not being here. He gets appointed to all sorts of stuff. Okay, other matters by supervisors. I'll start over here with Mr. Nick Mitchell and see if he has anything, and we'll work our way around. Everybody will get an opportunity. He has anything?
Just my same old, same old.
Okay.
I hope we don't lose momentum on that, EMS coverage.
Got you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll report on the Ag Committee. We met again, and things are moving along briskly. They've got a lot of great ideas, and they're more than willing to help out with the Ag Fair if we can get that together. Anna Prilman, my appointee, is working on some social media for that group. I think it's coming together really well moving forward.
Good. Mr. Kundev?
Yes, I'd like to echo what Mr. Carter said. I think the Ag Fair is very important for this county. It highlights what Frank County is, and it's still an agricultural community. And I think, being the county is like that, then I think we should make all attempts to make sure the Ag Fair goes off. And also, I'd like to thank the staff, and still thank them again for what they did from the budget. I really appreciate it. Thank y'all once again.
Ronald Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Burnett still here. When they close the road down out there, Brick Church Road, it was brought to my attention that the access to the backside of Blackwater Nursery will be no more. We're working through that right now. Okay, yeah, I would encourage, you know, for us to disrupt his full business, I wouldn't be happy with. And I know that the, that access is really important for getting big trucks in and out of his place of business. So, I'd like to see us try to make that work for Mr. Jones, please. Regards to Diamond Avenue, in the April meeting, as we're gathering our information on this, staff, as long as the board will support me on it, in the April meeting, I would like to have a 15-minute time slot to go over what me and Steve Sandy is looking at for Diamond Avenue as far as the potential accesses. If we gotta get with county attorney on what we can and cannot do. But, you know, we keep saying that kick the can. This is a can that I just don't think we need to kick anymore. We really need to find a way to get emergency vehicles into Diamond Avenue Extension when that train decides to stop on the track, which I don't understand why. They still stop and block that off. So, I'm getting together with Steve Sandy again Friday, around 11:00, 11:30, when I get back from my appointments. Make a visit out there, and then for the April meeting, I would like a 15, 20-minute time slot. And I would like for the people of Diamond Avenue to know about it some way, shape, or form. Just doing a social media post is one way, but if we can figure out a way to let them know that we are working on this, it will be much appreciated by me, and I'm sure Mike Carter, because that's still yours, even though it's county, right? So...
Some of that involves the town also.
Right. So, we need to, I've only, after this meeting, I only got nine meetings left. So, I would really like to see that one checked off on my to-do list for the citizens over there. It's really important. And as the captain of the fire department for Rocky Mount, I can assure you, it's definitely a concern of ours as well. So, I would really like to see us get some momentum on that and explore all options for getting fire, EMS, and police vehicles in there when that train has it blocked off. I would like someone from planning and zoning to pay a visit to the new Penn Hall subdivision off of Diller Hill. My question would be, correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa, did AEP develop that? Who's the developer down there?
The original property, the Penn Hall property was all owned by AEP.
So, AEP developed?
They did develop it, but then they auctioned off the properties.
They were the developer, and they sold the properties individually?
Right, but they had it for many years because the Penn Hall mansion that you hear people talking about that was sold recently, that's been there for a while. So, they've, I'm assuming they acquired the property when the lake was filled in, maybe. I haven't researched it.
So, I know where the mansion is, in Penn Hall. And, but, just a little bit further down, there's a new road for a new, and they're selling those lots off for people to build homes on. Did AEP develop that as well? How did they get away with putting the roads in there the way they did?
Well, I know the, go ahead if you... Yes, but I did find out today, because there was a question about Penn Hall Road that goes down to the Manor House. That's actually a state-maintained road.
That's not the one I'm talking about.
You're not talking about that one, I'm sorry.
No, I'm talking about the subdivision, it's essentially a subdivision, so...
Yes, it's because they're five acre, five acre or more.
I would encourage, all right, so, for future planning and zoning, you know, and I wish Mr. Thompson was here because he'd back me up on this one. Because I would assume that in the future down the road, that they would like to see the state take over the roads in there, eventually.
I would have to look at the plat, but right now, I don't think it was intended for them to be taken over because they did do them the five acre tracks, so...
So, here's what I'll say. As someone who has knowledge of big vehicles, especially fire trucks, it is a mess. The road that's put in, it's a mess. Fire trucks are gonna get stuck down there, you can guarantee it. So, and from what I understand, there's no fingers to be pointed at who built the roads, the contractor who built the roads. It was do it as cheaply as possible, is how it was explained to me. So, we need to pay a visit down there because my concern is, is protecting the people that are buying lots down there. I know they know what the road looks like, but if they don't understand the full, what we call it, covenants or whatever, the subdivision, if they don't see that there's gonna be anything done to the roads later down the road, I just don't know how they, just drive down there for me, Lisa.
I will, I will drive down there, but I'll also get Bill Rainey, he's been down there before on some other issues. So, I'll get him to go back down there also.
Yeah.
And take a look at the road, and see if there's something that we can do.
Yeah.
As far as EMS and stormwater.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. I've had several calls on that, so, it's not my district, but, you know, still had several calls. One more thing. And I'd like staff to look into, what was on my notes here? From what I understand, the state and federal governments recognized a line of duty death for one of our firefighters. Chris?
Sorry, say again, Mr.?
I understand that the state and federal government recognized a line of duty death for firefighter Mike Webb, but for some reason, he wasn't recognized locally. Can you look into that and give me an update on that, please?
Yes, sir.
And why that's not the case specifically? I meant to ask you, but I've been busy, I meant to ask you so we could have something to talk about here. But, it was in my notes, because I've had several constituents reach out to me to bring this up on why the states and feds recognized it, but locally, it wasn't. I think that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two things, if I may. The first, I would, you guys know I've been bringing up getting started with our zoning rewrite. It's gonna take two or three years, I think, when it's all said and done. We have money allocated to start getting a consultant on board to begin that process. And it is gonna be a long process. But, I would like to get some concurrence, if I, you know, from my colleagues up here, to give staff direction to go ahead and start the process. I don't know if we need to do an RFP for consulting services, I'm not sure. But, I'm real, very interested in getting something done here. We've been talking about it a long time. And a lot of the issues that many of our supervisors have, that they will be averted when we get our zoning code out of the antiquated way that it's written from 1988. So, Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask if there's concurrence of the board to direct staff to do that.
Once we get through the budget?
Yes, of course, of course.
Everybody good with that, as far as?
You okay with that? Thank you. The only other thing that I have, Mr. Whitlow, this is primarily, I guess, for you. During our budget processes, we had talked about my ongoing effort to try to get a code enforcement officer. And for the last two years, including this one, options get tossed out as to how we can get this done without an FTE. I want to understand what those options are, and because I want to develop whatever mechanisms we need to develop to get something done there. I don't wanna wait and have to deal with this again next year. Our ordinances need to be enforced. And if they're not, I don't know why we're here, you know. It's just that important to our citizens, and it's important to our businesses as well. Do you, can you help me with that, Mr. Whitlow?
Yeah, I think I can, Ms. Smith. And if there's, if there's consensus of the board, I think what we can do is maybe an agenda item, whether at the April meeting or the May meeting, maybe even, whether it's a work session or a mini-work session update, you know, where are we with code enforcement? It's very beneficial to review how we do code enforcement from the building standpoint, but EMS and zoning. And maybe that's a start, kind of an overview for the board, and then also, you know, what other options, you know, there may be that the board would wish us to look, dig deeper, and so forth. So, certainly, if that's a consensus of the board, we, you know, we can have that as a board discussion item and bring that back to the board.
Yeah, and if the board's in concurrence, Mr. Whitlow, I would, I think, getting a fundamental understanding of what it is we're looking at would be very instructive to the board. I would like to ask, if possible, that options be bought to that first meeting so that we can begin to apply the options to what we're talking about and get an understanding of what it's gonna, what it's gonna, you know, gonna be required to pull that off.
Let's not forget the sheriff offered the SRO officers too.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would ask again if we could gain some consensus on that.
Okay. Everybody good with moving forward with?
Yep, I am.
It looks like we have a consensus to move forward on looking into code enforcement. And as well, Maddie has let me know that we neglected to get a consensus on putting the Diamond Avenue project on the next month's agenda. So, do we have a consensus on moving forward with that, putting it on the agenda?
Please.
Thank you. I appreciate your consideration of my request.
All right. I think that's everybody, I think, at this point.
Mr. Chairman, did you have anything?
No, I didn't.
Could I ask for a five-minute break?
Yes.
I've gotta run outside and meet my mother real quick.
Our meeting for public comment. Public comment gives citizens an opportunity to address the board in person or in writing on matters appropriate to the responsibilities of the board. Speakers must direct all comments to the board as a whole and not to individual board members or employees of the board or county. Personal attacks and insulting, profane, or vulgar language will not be tolerated. Likewise, commentary on issues that are not within the purview of the board and that are not a function of local government and over which we have no control are not acceptable. Public comment is a not, is not a question-and-answer session, and board members will not answer questions during public comment. If a speaker violates these rules, the chair may rule the speaker out of order, and upon a second violation, have the speaker removed from the podium. Madam Clerk, will you please call the first speaker?
Glenna Moore, would you please come to the podium?
Good evening. Glenna Hawkins-Moore, Scenic River Drive, Snow Creek District. The United States Colored Troops have a powerful history that is relatively unknown by those of us in Franklin County who studied from lost cause-inspired Virginia history textbooks. From the beginning of the Civil War, abolitionist strongly encouraged President Lincoln to liberate the slaves and allow them to enlist in the United States military. Frederick Douglass wanted black soldiers to have a part in ending the enslavement of four million men, women, and children because of their race. After Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation in January of 1863, the US government officially began recruiting, enlisting, and training black soldiers. These soldiers served as enlisted men in segregated units under the command of white officers. By the end of the Civil War, 40,000 of the 180,000 USCT soldiers lost their lives. Please do not confuse the United States Colored Troops with Buffalo Soldiers. Buffalo Soldiers, possibly given that name by Native Americans because of their woolly hair, were activated into six and later four regiments after the Civil War. I'm very grateful to Robin Littl and the Shenandoah Valley Black Heritage Project for the information they compiled from US Census records. They, the project gathered tremendous amounts of details about the 70 United States Colored Troops soldiers born in Franklin County, establishing a firm foundation for our Franklin County students to learn a more accurate narrative of the Civil War history. I'm counting on the support of a Franklin County doctor and respected historian who announced at the June 10th, 2010 Franklin County Board of Supervisors meeting that he wanted to find a way to give people of color who served or contributed during the Civil War the recognition and honor they deserve. So, let the county demonstrate that appreciation with the United States Colored Troop Monument. Frederick Douglass famously wrote, "Once you let the black man get upon his person, the brass letters U.S., let him get an eagle on his button and a musket on his shoulder and bullets in his pocket. There is no power on earth that can deny he has earned the right to citizenship." Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Cummins, would you please come to the podium?
State your name and address, please.
I'm Kathy Cummins. I live at three-five-seven-nine Kemp Ford Road in Union Hall.
Thank you.
I want to congratulate you on your expressed willingness to see here in Rocky Mount a monument which celebrates the more complete history of Franklin County during the Civil War. Ms. Glenna Moore's discovery that upwards of seventy men from Franklin County served in the United States Colored Troops should be a source of pride. These men fought for the freedom of enslaved laborers and for the very idea upon which America was founded, that all men are created equal. Fortunately for all of us living in the South today, the United States won that war. I fully support such a monument. Yet, I must still object to the Confederate monument which stands in front of our community's courthouse. From a paid advertisement in the local paper a couple of years ago, placed by Friends of Franklin County, I quote, "It was erected by contributions from local residents, much like tombstones, to memorialize family members who had served in the Civil War. Nothing more and nothing less than or now. If that is the sentiment, then let's move it to where tombstones belong, to High Street Cemetery. That Confederate statue originally erected in nineteen-ten was the product of a vast campaign by the United Daughters of the Confederacy, which worked to place hundreds of Confederate statues all over the South. It is important to understand who the United Daughters of the Confederacy were. Founded in eighteen ninety-four, these were the wives, sisters, daughters, and granddaughters of Confederate officers, wealthy landowners, and statesmen. In nineteen-ten, they were women of influence who wanted to see their men vindicated and returned to the life of the pre-war South. Historical records indicate that they raised funds to erect statues in town squares and in front of courthouses with the express purpose of reminding people of who was in charge. This was the era of Jim Crow, the Ku Klux Klan, white supremacy, and a caste system in which black people were deemed less than white. The United Daughters venerated the Ku Klux Klan, and they were responsible for ensuring that children of the South were taught a whitewashed version of history celebrating the lost cause. I'm sure Ms. Moore has explained all this before. It is time for Franklin County to recognize America's complete history, not just the story as told by the United Daughters of the Confederacy. We should celebrate the fact that the United States of America prevailed and slavery was abolished. Confederate statues in front of courthouses are coming down, one by one, all over the South. I'd hate to see Franklin County be the very last to retire its statue. For Franklin County to thrive in the future, it must be a welcoming place for all people and not be seen memorializing the lost cause, some glorious past of more than a century ago, imagined by an organization which does not represent who we are today. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, who have any more?
I don't have any additional speakers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do we have anyone else in the gallery that would like to speak? Okay, see and none, we will recess until Tuesday, March twenty-eighth at six P.M. for a budget public hearing.